...or if you need reasonable accommodations, including this communication in an alternative format due to disability, please contact the clerk to the commission's office at 404-612-8232.
Unbelievable. Is that her? One, two, three, four. Wait a minute. One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay. Yeah. All right. Y'all ready? All right, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Fulton County Board of Commissioners. Today is March 1st, 2023. It is 10:02 a.m. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chairman Rob Pitts.
Present.
Commissioner Bridget Thorn.
Present.
Vice Chairman Bob Ellis.
Present.
Commissioner Dana Barrett.
Present.
Commissioner Natalie Hall.
Present.
Commissioner Marvin Arrington Jr. Commissioner Khadija Abdul-Raqman.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
All right, please rise for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Almighty God, we are grateful for the state's work and service. We pray now your blessings upon those who are gathered, and we pray now, Lord, to give our leaders your direction. We are grateful for those who protect and serve this county's standing nation. It is your name that we honor, pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
On page two, Consent Agenda. Twenty-three, zero, one, four, two, Adoption of the Consent Agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered routine by the county commission and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion will take place on these items. If discussion of any consent agenda item is desired, the item will be moved to the regular meeting agenda for separate consideration. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we have one item to be removed from today's consent agenda on page four, twenty-three dash zero, one, four, seven. It's a board appointment. This item has been amended, and it will be moved to the March fifteenth consent agenda. It will be a board appointment to the Community Development Block Grant Allocation Process Citizens' Review Panel, and Commissioner Barrett has nominated Lauren Waits.
So this one's being removed?
Removed.
Okay, anything else?
That's all I have.
All right, commissioners, any other items on the consent agenda? Further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. Motion to approve by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Vice Chair Ellis. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes. Six yeas, zero nays. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we have an item requested to be added to today's regular meeting agenda. On your add-on memo, twenty-three dash zero, one, seven, two, Real Estate and Asset Management requests approval to increase spending authority in a total amount of $130,000 for additional funding to cover the cost and support of the relocation of registration and election to the newly renovated warehouse.
All right, this will require a supermajority of five affirmative votes. This, I think, does qualify as an emergency. We had a problem the last time because the board held this item up, and if we do not do this today, we run the risk of losing the moving company, and we've gotten the prices down. But this does need to, we need to take action on this today. Commissioner Thorn, you have the floor. But the motion to approve by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Commissioner Barrett.
When are we predicting the moving date? Do we have a CO on the building?
Yes, we do have a CO on the building. The long pole in the tent now and the date will be the furniture. We anticipated moving in late March, early April. It could be a month later from there.
And so this is a necessity? It's urgent, and it's going to be a month longer than...
Well, I think what we don't want to do is not have a moving company available, or not have these temporary services available, and I'm sure there'll be some planning that will occur during this period of time before the actual move date.
I was just wondering, like, the moving company, I understand we have them on retainer.
Well, not retainer.
Like, we pay sixty thousand, and we use this company? But is that...
Well, we can't dictate that they would be available on any date in the future.
We need to get them on a contract immediately?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, I appreciate your affirmative vote. Let's vote, please.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes. Five yeas, one nay.
Thank you. Continue, Madam Clerk.
On page five, Regular Meeting Agenda. Twenty-three, zero, one, five, one, Adoption of Regular Meeting Agenda. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we have amendments to today's regular meeting agenda. On page six, we have two proclamations to be removed. First proclamation, recognizing North Fulton Chamber of Commerce Appreciation Day. That proclamation will be moved to the April 12th regular meeting. And the proclamation recognizing G. Morris Sweeney Appreciation Day will be moved to a later meeting.
Okay. Any others?
And on items to be revised, on page seven, twenty-three dash zero, zero, eight, eight, Registration and Election. Request approval of a statewide contract. This item was revised to change the dollar amount to $155,000. On page nine, twenty-three, zero, one, six, seven, Request approval of a resolution urging Georgia General Assembly to enact Senate Bill eighty-two, commonly known as the Crown Act, sponsored by Commissioner Hall. Item revised to amend, page two, line thirty-three, to reference the ordinance twenty-three, zero, one, six, six. And on page ten, an item to be removed, twenty-three, zero, one, three, eight, South Fulton Community Improvement District Board. That item will be moved to the March fifteenth recess meeting.
All right, any other items on the agenda for today? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the regular agenda as amended. Motion to approve by Commissioner Optu Rockman, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes. Six yeas, zero nays. Twenty-three, zero, one, five, two, Ratification of Minutes. Regular meeting minutes, February first. Recession meeting post-agenda minutes, February fifteenth, 2023.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Optu Rockman, seconded by Commissioner Hall. Vice Chair Ellis, question?
Yeah, I just had one modification for the recess meeting post-agenda minutes for February fifteenth, 2023, on page twenty and twenty-five, the post-agenda in reference to item twenty-three, oh, one, three, five. There were two parts, two that were approved with a substitute motion. One is appropriately referenced, Princeton Lakes TAD. There's a piece of it that is omitted, and I would ask that that be added, because it'll be included in the regular meeting minutes once those come forward. And the second component is to add the portion that it was also included that we would thank Invest Atlanta for the supplemental information provided on the Eastside TAD, and to advise them of our continued participation in the Eastside TAD. So that could be added to the post-agenda meeting, post-agenda minutes to properly reflect that.
So noted.
All right, on the proposed agenda as amended, motion to approve as amended by Commissioner Optu Rockman, it is seconded by Commissioner Hall. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes. Six yeas, zero nays. On page six, twenty-three, zero, one, five, three, Presentation of Proclamations and Certificates. The first proclamation is recognizing Developmental Disabilities Awareness Appreciation Month, sponsored by Vice Chair Ellis and Commissioner Abdul-Raqman.
Okay, now, we originally had nine proclamations, and it takes about five minutes each, depending on how much we talk. So that would take us up to about forty-five minutes, but two have been removed from today's agenda, and technically, we need to have some conversation about these proclamations as well, because based upon our own rules and procedures, proclamations are to be presented only at the recess meeting, and they're to start at ten o'clock and end at ten-thirty. The first problem with that is the, this notion of a recess meeting is outdated. That was, we used to call that second meeting, recess meeting, when we had zoning. We no longer really deal with zoning, so we need to make some adjustments there, and we can talk about how we want to move forward with whether limiting the number of proclamations or expanding the time, but just to, for us to be thinking about that. But we have seven now, so five minutes each, that'll take us past the thirty minutes, and instead of starting at ten o'clock, we're starting at ten, what is that, ten-thirteen?
Who's reading? Am I reading, or are you reading? I'm reading? Okay. All right. Well, I just want to note that this is a full-board proclamation, not just by the two commissioners that are noted, so we all, we all stand in unified support of what we're about to proclaim right here, and I want to thank all the staff and the clients we have from our various, our three centers around the county. Thank you for being with us, and we value all of you. Whereas in 1987, President Ronald Reagan proclaimed the month of March as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month to increase public awareness of the needs and exceptional potential of Americans with intellectual developmental disabilities. And whereas intellectual developmental disabilities are a group of conditions due to an impairment in physical learning, language, or behavior areas that begin during the developmental period and may impact day-to-day functioning that usually lasts throughout a person's lifetime. And whereas the 2023 theme for Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month is Beyond the Conversation, which shines a spotlight on intellectual and developmentally disabled individuals in every area of daily life. Beyond the Conversation recommends initiating actionable items to increase consciousness in the following areas: innovations in disability work, intersectionality, sexuality training, financial stability, and entrepreneurship. And whereas orange is the official color of IDD Awareness Month because it symbolizes energy and positivity, one of the easiest ways to participate is to invite your team to wear orange. And this is a Georgia Bulldog, I guess I should have rolled out my orange today, so I apologize for that. All right. Whereas Fulton's Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities has served the IDD individuals through its day services programs for the past forty-eight years, the program is committed to bringing awareness and acceptance for people of every ability and providing opportunities to become more independent, economically self-sufficient, and contributing members of their communities. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Fulton County recognizes the intellectual developmentally disabled as valuable members of the Fulton County community, encourages their inclusion in every facet of life in metro Atlanta, and does hereby proclaim March 2023 as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in Fulton County, Georgia. I just want to say, just a quick sort of point of, you know, just personal note, I think my first act of political engagement occurred when I was a fat eleven or twelve-year-old, and I went over to the State Capitol and participated in a, sort of an ad hoc developmental disability awareness, awareness day at the State Capitol. And I actually have a couple of photos from that that still sit up in my office today. So we've come a long way since whatever that was, thirty-seven, thirty-eight years ago, but we definitely have. Still a long way to go, and Beyond the Conversation is an important initiative, as we consider that, you know, in this Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. So thank you, and with that, I'd like to turn it over to our staff to make a few remarks.
Good morning and greetings from the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities. I'm Veronica Rooks, a program manager in the Developmental Disabilities Division. On behalf of our team, I would like to thank the commissioners and our leadership for continued support of our program. It is also important to acknowledge the awesome staff who often pour extra time and resources to create wonderful experiences for the clients we serve. Lastly, we would not be in the position of continuing to thrive without the participants and their caregivers who choose to come to our facilities and who trust the services we provide to their loved ones. Please join me in celebrating and saluting Intellectual Developmentally Disabilities Awareness Month.
The next proclamation is recognizing David "Geta-Chu" Smith Appreciation Day, sponsored by Commissioner Hall.
Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Come on down, everybody. You're so welcome. Is that it? That's everyone? Come on down. You can give him your phone if you want pictures taken. You good? Okay. Is that everybody? All right. It is truly an honor to present this proclamation. When the DA contacted me and told me about your background, I was like, of course, I will do this. And the proclamation reads, whereas David K. Geta-Chu, Geta-Cho, Smith Senior was born in Atlanta, Georgia, to David and Pauline Smith, and graduated valedictorian from St. Andrews School in Tennessee. He furthered his education at Yale University, the London School of Economics, and Harvard Law School. And whereas David began his legal career as Georgia Pacific's first African-American attorney, followed by his appointment to associate judge to the Fulton Juvenile Court. During Atlanta's Olympic period, David served as managing director for local government and community relations for the Atlanta Committee for the Olympic Games, followed by his tenure as legal producer of the Judge Hatchet Show. Oh, I love that show. And whereas David served as Fulton County's chief senior assistant district attorney for almost two decades, and he has represented the state of Georgia in over two-hundred-and-forty appeals before the Georgia Court of Appeals and the Supreme Court. He has also served as the Director of District Attorney Internship and Fellowship Programming, where he trained hundreds of law students. And whereas David has served as vice president of the Gate City Bar Association under two separate administrations, and he has also been active in numerous organizations and activities, including Leadership Atlanta, Fulton Truancy Project, ARC Regional Leadership Institute, and St. Paul's Episcopal Church Vestry, among many others. And whereas David's greatest accomplishment in his family, he married to Dr. Esseta Kitty Getcha, Getta-Chow Smith, and they are proud parents of two adult sons, David Junior and Daniel, and grandparents of three grandsons. Wow, you don't look old enough to have three grandsons. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Fulton County Board of Commissioners recognizes David K. Getta-Chow Smith Senior for his stellar career and celebrates with him and his family on his retirement, and does hereby proclaim Wednesday, March first, 2023, as David K. Getta-Chow Smith Senior Appreciation Day in Fulton County, Georgia. Congratulations, and I apologize if I messed you up.
David, I have known you all my life. I grew up in his parents' restaurant, Smith's Restaurant. My dad and family, we used to go there for dinner all the time. Just so thankful for your service to Fulton County, for all that you have done, the time that you have taken. It is truly a pleasure. I know you will enjoy your retirement from Fulton County, but you're graduating, you're going to be a full-time granddad now.
Hello, my name is Mike Carlson. I'm an executive district attorney with the Fulton County District Attorney's Office, and along with my fellow executive district attorney, Deja Young, and of course, on behalf of Madam District Attorney, Fonny Willis, we want to thank the Board of Commissioners and the people of Fulton County for this well-deserved honor from my old friend and colleague, David, a longtime, I won't say, I date both of us, longtime friend and colleague, David Smith. And in addition to the inspiring words here, I just want to say that David has spent so many years, not only as an advocate, teacher, mentor, and most of all, friend to so many. It's been a privilege to know him, it's been a privilege to work with him, and as he goes out into this next chapter of his life, I want folks to know what an example he served, not only as a zealous advocate, but as a poised professional, and someone who people could not look, who can look up to, of course, not only professionally, but personally, as embodying exactly what public service is all about. We will miss him, but we will remain inspired by him, and we're hoping he stays in touch. Thank you so much.
Okay. Well, this is quite a surprise to me. I did not expect this, but I certainly appreciate it. It's certainly been enjoyable over the years. I've been a member of the bar for forty-three years, and having served in two major capacities with Fulton County, over at the juvenile court for many years, and also over almost about two decades with the district attorney's office. And so I will leave with a smile on my face, and I look forward to staying in touch with many of you. Thank you.
The next proclamation is recognizing Barbara J. Cole Appreciation Day, sponsored by Commissioner Hall.
Come on down. You can spread out on each side. All right. Barbara Cole, it is an honor to present you with this proclamation, and it reads, whereas Barbara J. Cole earned her Bachelor of Arts degree from the University of North Carolina in Asheville, and her Juris Doctor degree from the University of Tennessee College of Law in Knoxville. And whereas Mrs. Cole served as an army officer in the Judge Advocate General Corps from nineteen eighty-two until 2012, when she retired with the rank of Colonel. Her final assignment in her military career was the Chief of Staff of the U.S. Army Reserve Legal Command in Gaithersburg, Maryland. And whereas Mrs. Cole is the chief clerk for the Fulton County Probate Court, where she has worked since June of nineteen eighty-five, during which time she has served in a variety of positions, including law clerk, senior staff, attorney, judicial hearing officer, and chief clerk. And whereas Mrs. Cole is a member of the State Bar of Georgia and spends time volunteering with fur kids, oh, and cat world sanctuary in Utah. And whereas Mrs. Cole and her husband of forty years, Reverend Si Lynch, pastor of Trinity Baptist Church in Conyers, Georgia, live in Stone Mountain with their three cats. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Fulton County Board of Commissioners and all associated with Probate Court recognizes Barbara J. Cole for her professionalism and thirty-seven years of dedicated service to the citizens of Fulton to the citizens of Fulton County, and does hereby proclaim Wednesday, March 1st, 2023, as Barbara J. Cole Appreciation Day in Fulton County, Georgia. Congratulations, Mrs. Cole.
It has been said that when a great, longtime leader retires, a library burns to the ground. Mrs. Cole has been a leader in the Probate Court for many years, and with the United States Government, JAB Corp. We are saddened to see that she's leaving. However, we are excited that she will continue to be engaged with our court as a hearing officer. And so we say farewell to you, Mrs. Cole, and thank you.
When I took a position as Law Clerk with Floyd Probst, the former Probate Judge in 1985, and made a two-year commitment to him, I certainly did not expect to still be here in 2023. Every day that I have served Fulton County and the citizens of Fulton County has been a pleasure. This has been the best job ever. I've served under three judges, Floyd Probst, Judge Pinky Tumer, and now Judge Kenya Johnson. And I appreciate everything that they have done for me and just the confidence that they've given, had in me to lead our court. I'm gonna miss it, but I am certainly going to be thankful that I can continue to serve the citizens of Fulton County and the Probate Court as a hearing officer. And thanks to the board for this recognition.
The next proclamation is recognizing National School Social Work Week sponsored by Commissioner Arrington.
Welcome, ladies, welcome. All right, the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the social work profession is dedicated to improving human well-being and enhancing the basic needs of all people, especially the most vulnerable among us. And this year's theme, "Social Work Breaks Barriers", embodies the heroic contributions of the social work profession to our nation, including the work social workers have done to heal our nation during these times of pandemic, racial unrest, and economic uncertainty. And whereas school social workers are valuable members of the multi-disciplinary team who have a central role in creating a positive school climate, serving as a vital link between the home, school, and community to ensure that students remain in school and graduate, reach their fullest academic potential, and grow socially and emotionally. And whereas school social workers have expertise in many areas, including human growth and development, mental health, positive behavioral supports, effects of family and environmental dynamics on the student, child abuse and neglect, community resources. And whereas school social workers are present in times of crisis, connecting students to staff, to wraparound support that assists with wellness matters, providing crisis support that helps with overcoming traumatic events, and linking families and communities to resources that help with recovery from natural disasters such as floods and hurricanes. And whereas school social workers are professionally trained to provide services to students who face serious challenges to school success, including poverty, discrimination, abuse, addiction, homelessness, divorce of parents, loss of a loved one, and other barriers to learning. Now therefore be it resolved that the Fulton County Board of Commissioners recognizes March as Professional Social Worker Month, and does hereby proclaim the week of March 5th through 11th, 2023, as National School Social Work Week in Fulton County, Georgia.
So I didn't know I had to give a speech. But we really want to bring greetings from Atlanta Public School Social Work Department. We thank the Board of Commissioners and Fulton County as a whole for supporting the life-affirming work of school social workers. We can't say enough about all of the things that go into really helping to break barriers and reduce gaps, and to really link families and connect them to resources and supports in these times. So we thank you so much for honoring us and helping us to celebrate this month with us. Thank you.
The next proclamation is recognizing President Jimmy Carter. Appreciation Day sponsored by Commissioner Abdul Rahman.
I just want to quickly take this time and make it known that all of the commissioners support this. We have heard about our former President Jimmy Carter entering hospice care. And as a Habitat for Humanity ambassador, I felt it was a need for us to put in the record our proclamation. I will not read the entire proclamation, but I will just give some highlights. And while we're doing it, whereas United States President Jimmy Carter was born on Wednesday, October 1st, 1924, in Plains, Georgia, where he attended public schools. He furthered his education at Georgia Southwestern College and the Georgia Institute of Technology, later earning his Bachelor of Science Degree from the United States Naval Academy in 1946. And whereas President Carter began his political career in 1962, when he was elected to the Georgia State Senate, he was later sworn in as the 76th Governor of Georgia in January of 1971, and served as the Democratic National Committee Campaign Chairman for the 1974 Congressional and gubernatorial elections. And whereas President Carter was sworn in as the 39th President of the United States in January of 1977, and served one term. During his term as President, significant foreign policy accomplishments of his administration included the Panama Canal Treaties, the Camp David Accords, and the establishment of U.S. diplomatic relations with the People's Republic of China, among many, many others. Whereas in 1982, President Carter founded the Carter Center, a nonpartisan and nonprofit center that addresses national and international issues of public policy, which includes the Jimmy Carter Library and Museum, and is located in Atlanta, Georgia. President Carter has also been awarded the Nobel Peace Prize for his many decades of untiring efforts to find peaceful solutions to international conflicts. Whereas President Carter and his wife Rosalynn Carter volunteer one week every year for Habitat for Humanity, a nonprofit organization that helps needy people in the United States and other countries renovate and build homes for themselves. He also taught Sunday School in Marinatia Baptist Church in his hometown of Plains. Until recently, by the way, did he stop teaching Sunday School. Now therefore be it resolved that the Fulton County Board of Commissioners recognizes President Jimmy Carter for his legacy of leadership and commitment to the citizens of Georgia and the United States and citizens around the world, and does hereby proclaim Wednesday, March 1st, 2023, as President Jimmy Carter Appreciation Day in Fulton County.
The next proclamation is recognizing Women's History Month sponsored by Commissioner Abdul Rahman.
Also, as we know, March is Women's History Month. This is a proclamation that has full board support. So I will not read it in its entirety due to the time. But whereas Women's History Month highlights the contributions of women in history and contemporary society, and is celebrated during the month of March in the United States, Great Britain, and Australia, which corresponds with the International Women's Day on March 8th. And whereas Women's History Month traces its beginnings back to the first International Women's Day in 1911 and in February 1980. President Jimmy Carter issued a presidential proclamation declaring the week of March 8th, 1980 as National Women's History Week. And whereas Women's History Month celebrates iconic leaders like Susan B. Anthony, Sojourner Truth, Elizabeth Cady, Stanton, and Harriet Tubman, as well as many local leaders who struggle for equality. Now therefore be it resolved that the Fulton County Board of Commissioners recognizes the many contributions that women have made in our society for the benefit of all people, and acknowledge the women in our local community who continue to make history, and does hereby proclaim the month of March, 2023, as Women History Month in Fulton County. And having said that, because it is Women's History Month, I'm going to immediately go into this next proclamation. So glad to have my colleagues to sign on. Also, so glad that the chairman gave special permission when I asked if we could actually show a clip of this individual that we are celebrating for National Women's Month. And also, it ties into the developmental disability. So if I can get everyone to look at the monitor, please. And as you can see, I have the orange on, so they want you all to look at me. I'm ushering in spring. There we go. Okay, can we get the volume, please?
...with the pregnancy, Ms. Rose was prescribed Thalidomide. Unfortunately, before the terrifying... On a blissful day in the summer of 1962, James and Rose Herring received the good news that they were pregnant. To help with the nausea associated with the pregnancy, Ms. Rose was prescribed Thalidomide. Unfortunately, before the terrifying effects of this drug were discovered, thousands of babies tied, and even more were born with congenital birth defects. On May 23rd, 1963, Ms. Rose gave birth to a beautiful girl, Tawana, who had no arms and impaired use of her legs. The Harrings refused to allow the condition of Tawana to be an excuse. From a foundation built on faith and perseverance, Tawana has lived a life that epitomizes the triumphant spirit that dwells within us all. Tawana and her husband of 31 years, Toby Williams, have one daughter, April. And to see how Tawana cared for her daughter is nothing short of amazing. And that was just the beginning. Tawana is a CEO, a television personality, a national acclaimed Les Brown Platinum motivational speaker, an author of seven books, and an artist. Overcoming years of physical pain and emotional scars, rape, and the rejection of family members in peer, Tawana is steadfast in her mission to give hope, help, and inspiration to those facing adversities and challenges.
Don't know what it feels like, ladies, to rub my fingers through my hair. I don't even know what my own hair feels like. Don't know what it feels like to scratch where I... To hold my crying baby, to hold my husband's hand, to hug him. To feed myself. To pull my pants up and down in the bathroom. Don't know what that feels like. To wipe my own tears. Glory to God. But you do.
Ladies and gentlemen, please give a warm Fulton County welcome to Tawana Williams.
Can I get Dave Manuel? Can I get the county manager? Can you please join us as Tawana makes her way here? This is a phenomenal woman, and nobody could bring in this month other than you. And we appreciate you here at Fulton County. Can I get some of you all to come on this side, please? What an honor and a privilege to be here on today. Thank you, Commissioner Kadesha and your team. We honor you on today for all you do, for this community. I bring greetings with my husband Toby from Wilson, North Carolina, and around the world. I... I'm Tawana Williams, your messenger of hope, help, and inspiration. And I was blessed, I'm gonna say that again, I was blessed to be born without arms and impaired use of my legs due to the drug Thalidomide that was given to my mother during pregnancy. Then my mother told me there was nothing that I could not do. And I had a grandma Rogers that did not play with me. And when I was four and a half years old, she looked me in the eyes and she said, "T, you must not have needed arms 'cause God didn't give them to you." She said, "Nothing's missing. If you don't have it, then you don't need it." And those words continue to resonate throughout my soul. And yes, I've overcome some major adversities and challenges throughout my life. I was gang raped many years ago during a home invasion, raped by my stepfather. I was addicted to crack and cocaine for 10 long years. I've experienced abortion, motherhood, a stroke, a mild heart attack, and COVID-19. So I know that I'm here to give you hope and to help you overcome whatever adversities and challenges you may be facing in your life. And that's why I am unarmed, but dangerous, and an eagle without wings. God bless you.
God bless you, we thank you, and I'm honored. Not much I can follow up with that, but let me just say, now therefore be it resolved that the Fulton County Board of Commissioners, in commemoration of Women's History Month, recognizes Tawana Williams for sharing her story of resilience, tenacity, and determination, and thus hereby proclaim Wednesday, March 1st, 2023, as Tawana Williams Appreciation Day in Fulton County. And I would be remiss if I didn't say, this special guest that I have to the left of me, I did not realize he was here, but at the end of the day, when you can bring out one of our champions in the community that has actually...all I can say is, what's the favorite words, Tawana, they say at the end of his commercial? This is it! This is it, and I honor you all for coming out today, and I honor my commissioners and my chairman for allowing us to sing your praises and give you your flowers while you're living.
This is my friend, my longtime friend, about 15 years, Mr. Butch and his beautiful wife, Diane. We've been friends for years and I love you.
Thank you. Thank you for all what you've done in the community, and thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule, coming here today.
All right, Madam Clerk.
On page 7, Public Hearings, 230154, Public Comment. Citizens wishing to participate in public comment will be allowed to appear in person or may choose to participate virtually via Zoom video conference thing or by submitting their comments in writing online by registering on the county website, www.fultoncountyga.gov. Priority for public comment will be given to Fulton County citizens and those individuals representing businesses or organizations located within Fulton County. Speakers will be granted up to two minutes each. The public will not be allowed to yield or donate time to other speakers. The public comment portion of the meeting will not exceed 30 minutes. In the event the 30-minute time limit is reached prior to public comments being completed, public comment will be suspended and the business portion of the VOC meeting will commence. Public comment will resume at the end of the meeting. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we will start with speakers in Assembly Hall. We have received one speaker card. Representative Kim Schofield, please come down.
Good morning, Madam Representative. Thank you for being here, and we normally have a two-minute limit for public comments, but that does not apply to public officials, so you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and note that we're voting over there, so I really need 60 seconds. Well, good morning, Mr. Chair, and members of the Board of Commissioners and to the residents of Fulton County. I'm State Representative Kim Schofield, representing Fulton County. It's a pleasure to be here with you today to discuss creating a respectful and open world for natural hair, also known as the Crown Act. Thank you, Commissioner Hall, for introducing this ordinance, Ordinance 23-0167, and urging the state of Georgia to pass HB 432 and Senate SB 82, a law that prohibits race-based hair discrimination, which can be used in the denial of employment and educational opportunities because of hair texture or protective hairstylings such as braids, locks, twists, bantu knots. The official Crown Act was introduced by the Crown Coalition founded by DUB, National Urban League, Color of Change, and Western Center on Law and Poverty. And we know that to deny the hair texture of anyone is like denying our own heritage. We're inclusive, and this county embraces all and celebrates diversity in housing, employment, healthcare, education, and public service, and there are doctors, lawyers, many people that came down today, just noticing all the diverse hairstyles. And so I just wanted to thank you for making this county more inclusive, that we don't look, are looked at as revolutionary, and we feel valued more than devalued. A few years ago, the military introduced a ban on hair discrimination, and it passed overwhelmingly, 467 to 1 vote. So, again, I just wanted to thank every member of the commission, the commissioners, for embracing this and joining Clayton County, Gwinnett, DeKalb, the cities of Atlanta, East Point, South Fulton, and Stockbridge on the acceptance and passage of this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I also have came bearing gifts, you know, at the state, we like to give you gifts. So I do have for everyone a button, and I'll hand everything to the clerk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we have two speakers on Zoom and three emailed-in comments.
Are they ready? Hard to hear not, go to the, you say, one email?
Good morning, Commissioners. We have three speakers on Zoom. The first to speak is Ben Howard.
Good morning. Ben Howard, Senior Advocate, Public Policy Analyst. Seniors and friends of senior citizens, every now and then you get to the point where you might say enough is enough. That enough point came when Office of Aging Management liberally tantalized six members of the esteemed Fulton County Commission to pass Fulton County Ordinance 23-0-0051. 0051 gave the Atlanta Housing Authority representation and a double vote on the Fulton County Commission on Elder Affairs, the official representative of senior citizens in Fulton County. I think it's safe to say the Atlanta Housing Authority would never be given a double vote or any vote on the Atlanta Commission on Aging. For proof of that statement, get out your Notebook 51 and somehow view the video of the Atlanta Housing Authority Board of Directors' meeting last week. At that board meeting, Atlanta's senior citizens took the Atlanta Housing Authority to task during public comments. Stay tuned.
All right, next speaker.
The next speaker is Robbie Caban.
Hi, I'm Colleen, I'm sorry, pardon me. Board of Commissioners, thank you for allowing a public comment. I'm reiterating my concerns as a Fulton County taxpayer, business owner, and homeowner on behalf of your 1 million, res, over 1 million residents in Fulton County and constituents regarding animal control. Fulton County Animal Services, you have purview and overview of that tax-funded county contract now, using about $5 million in county taxpayer funds, not including donations, which are not tracked, and not including the grants received. Unfortunately, and as you know, you have received six whistleblower statements, you were misled and advised that those statements were old, that is incorrect, those whistleblower statements are circulating online, you've been sent them, you have the names of cooperating witnesses, including 20, who are all awaiting your action, your action, the Department of Public Safety, the Department of Emergency Management, because we have corruption and malfeasance throughout our operation in every department, field services, the kennel, dispatch, reception, literally everywhere. You have the information you need to call for an independent audit with the vendor Lifeline who appears to be mismanaging our taxpayer funds. As you know, county animal control services are a mandated service. We expect you to please be responsible with our taxpayer funds, ensure that our contract is compliant, our animals are protected, and our communities are safe. The whistleblowers and no employee of Fulton County should be fearful of their, losing their career, their employment, being blacklisted for simply coming forward in regards to...
15 seconds remaining.
Please do the right thing. The animals are voiceless, and we need you to step up for them.
Next speaker.
The last speaker is Amanda Brennan. Okay, I think that's it. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners.
There's one email? Three?
The first email comment is from Jennifer Abernathy. I'm appalled by what I've read recently in regard to Fulton County Animal Services under the management of Lifeline. Allegations ranging from sexual harassment of employees to abuse and breeding of dogs in the shelter to convict felons using animal control trucks to traffic drugs. All of these allegations with supporting documentation have been brought to your attention, and an independent audit, among other resolutions of grievance, have been requested. I do not understand why you fail to act on these serious allegations and grievances, and I am asking you to act immediately to address them. Employees and animals in the shelter and people and animals throughout the county are endangered every minute that you delay. For example, when I reported recently a pit bull tethered in North Fulton County, I was told by the responding officer and director, Trey Law, that a runner is not a tether because it's not attached to a stationary object, it's attached to two stationary objects. The officer stated, in fact, FCAS provides runners to residents whose dogs are tethered unattended. When I expressed concern that a child could be mauled by a dog on a runner, the responding officer told me that if a child is mauled, it's the parent's fault. From this interaction, I've concluded that FCAS officers and field service directors have created their own loophole for not enforcing the ordinance as written. The way the ordinance is written and the intent of the tethering section as amended more than a decade ago is that unattended tethering is prohibited, period. I helped lobby for this amendment, so I know the purpose...
15 seconds.
...that was to protect the dogs. It states it shall be unlawful for the owner, custodian, or arborer of a dog to restrain or anchor such animals. There is nothing for interpretation. Reform Fulton County Animal Services Shelter and Field Operations. Thank you. Similar comments were also provided by Rahika Tulpeel and Julie Arrington. This concludes the email comments. Thank you.
No further? All right, continue, Madam Clerk.
Bottom of page 7, under Open and Responsible Government, 230155, External Affairs, Presentation of the 2023 Legislative Session Update.
Ms. Corbett.
Thank you. User error there. Good morning, Commissioners, Jessica Corbett, Director of External Affairs. We have two updates for you today, and the first will be about our state legislative update, and we'll go through a number of bills, and then you will also hear from our federal government affairs team who are here from DC, and many of you had an opportunity to meet them when you were at the NACO Legislative Conference a few weeks ago. Also, just wanted to say happy Women's History Month to the four women and our Board of Commissioners, and congratulations, and thank you for all you do. So, just to start off, I'm gonna go through, again, several of the bills, and then there are a few bills that, from conversations with many of you, wanted to ask if you'd like to take a position, and one specifically, Mr. Chairman, yesterday, we talked late yesterday afternoon about the two Buckhead Cityhood bills, and we do have a simple resolution that we will distribute now. The county attorney's office is putting it in proper format, but we have that for you if you'd like to consider that today.
Yes, that's being passed out now, but I would like for us to take a position on that one today.
Yes, and if you would like to take a floor vote on any others, but that one has been, of course, of specific significance. So I'm just gonna start off. Next slide, please. Again, I'm gonna talk about several of our priorities today, but just sharing these for our viewing public. Next slide, please. Just wanted to, as a reminder, that we're still in the midst of the budget process. They have adopted, the Senate has passed the amended FY23 budget, but the FY24 budget, which is where some of our appropriations requests are, has not yet gone through the Full Appropriations Committee, and we're expecting that to happen in the next several days. House Bill 520, and this is one that the board may want to consider, is a new omnibus bill related to mental health access. It includes funding for services and also has a number of facets related to workforce for healthcare providers, which is a major issue here and around the state, and also talks about data sharing and transfer, which are ongoing issues in healthcare. Crossover Day is Monday, so there's a lot of activity this week, and next week there will be a joint session with the Justice Partners presenting to the General Assembly. Next slide, please. Although Fulton County government did not organize Fulton County Day, there was an agency that organized that, and several of you attended that session. We also wanted to mention that the delegation has had their ongoing meetings on Thursdays. Last week, the Fulton County Tax Assessor's Office provided some comment about a bill on senior homestead exemptions, which was one of our priority areas. District Attorney Fonny Willis gave several updates, and there was also a bill that we'll talk about today related to the Clerk of Magistrate Court. That bill was, a draft of that was circulated on that day, and then there has, we expect that to be introduced. And there was some discussion about the two Buckhead Cityhood bills. Also wanted to mention that on Friday, the South Fulton delegation heard, had a number of questions about elections... of questions about elections, and the Department of Registration and Elections provided updates at that meeting. Tomorrow's delegation meeting will include presentations from Sheriff LaBott and the Atlanta Police Foundation. Next slide, please. Wanted to, this is really just a reminder of where we are with our Behavioral Health Crisis Center funding. Again, we are waiting for appropriations process to continue, so the FY twenty-four budget is still in the House, but we expect to see movement on that before your next meeting. Next slide, please. So here is where we are with the priorities that are part of our adopted package. The, there is a bill related to state court pensions specifically. That bill, we actually have had the certification letter, and that bill will be dropped today by Representative Roger Bruce. Senator Sonia Halpern is introducing a bill on the Senior Homestead Exemption Simplification, so we are expecting that to be introduced and have a number this week. We have also worked with the Child Attorney's Office, and the bill that they have, Representative Mandy Ballinger, who is the Chair of Juvenile Justice, she has carried that bill with us and other child attorneys' offices. That bill has, was passed out of committee last week and has actually now passed out of the House. That we are still continuing to have conversation on the tax appeals. We don't have legislation right now, and that is an ongoing conversation. At your last meeting, this board took positions on two pieces of legislation, House Bill Thirty and SB Nineteen, and both of those, your positions have been communicated on both of those. Next slide, please. So specifically, wanted to say that House Bill Thirty has, that was passed out of committee. And then we also had on Senate Bill Nineteen, that also passed by the Senate. It passed out of committee last week and passed out of the Senate yesterday. There was a substitute with some amendments, but that is one of the bills we are tracking. That is the one that is related to passport fees by clerks of Superior Court. I'm going to go off book a little bit here and just talk about a couple of other bills that are related to the county. One of those wanted to mention was the bill related to the magistrate court clerk, and we provided a copy of that to you via email, and I've received a few questions about that and specifically about fiscal impact. As written, essentially, this legislation would take the clerk function that is currently managed by the clerk of magistrate and Superior Court and create a magistrate court clerk position with that clerk to be appointed by the chief magistrate judge. We've been asked about fiscal impact, and it's difficult to say as written. We have many transitions, and it is true that unless it is, unless the bill specifically and explicitly says there can be no cost impact, we have no way of knowing that there could or could not be. In other words, many transitions do result in a cost. You know, we have to buy new computers for staff because they've now moved to a different department, or there's any number of issues that can arise. So the bill as written does not specify that it is to be handled in a revenue-neutral manner. And if the board, the board, at your pleasure, may choose to oppose the legislation, or you may choose to request an amendment that specifies that there can be no cost impact. Also wanted to make you aware that the clerk of Superior Court has requested to present to the delegation with her response to that legislation, and we expect that to occur next week. Wanted to also provide an update on House Bill Two-Two-Six. This is a bill that is related to Medicaid coverage for persons with HIV. As you know, Georgia is not a Medicaid expansion state, so this is a limited expansion that would specifically provide for care for persons with HIV under Medicaid provisions. The notion is to allow people who currently have an HIV diagnosis to receive, by providing them Medicaid, to provide them additional care before their illness progresses, as we've seen unfortunately in many cases. Wanted to also mention that House Bill One Eighty-Nine has had an additional hearing this week. This is the bill that is related to truck weight limits on five-axle trucks on state routes, so that is an ongoing discussion. And then lastly, on the Buckhead Cityhood bill, and again, you have that resolution, there are two pieces of legislation, Senate Bills One Thirteen and One Fourteen. They were introduced on February seventh, and on Monday, both of those bills passed out of slow-go, so they could, at this point, progress to the next stage. The governor's office has issued a legal memorandum, and I think we're getting copies of that for you if you haven't seen it, that raises a number of questions about constitutionality and fiscal impact, and that has really been the debate, is about the fiscal impact on bonds, on the school systems, the school, boundaries of Atlanta public schools are contiguous with the city limits, and if those change, that would have an immediate impact potentially on Fulton County schools. There's also a question about local option sales tax, about MARTA, and other key partners who are part of that fiscal discussion. So those questions the governor's office has raised align with many of the questions that we have seen in our own analysis, of course, and specifically, as we just went through a very difficult negotiation period on lost last year, having to go through another round of that could be very difficult for everyone. So this is a resolution, again, based on my conversation yesterday with Chairman Pitts, that would signify the board's opposition to these two bills.
Let's deal with that one. Why don't you sound the draft resolution?
Madam Clerk-
We'll take a position on that, read that to the record. Do you have a copy of it?
A resolution by the Fulton County Board of Commissioners opposing Georgia Senate Bill One Thirteen and Senate Bill One Fourteen and for other purposes.
Let's read it.
Whereas Georgia Senate Bill One Thirteen and One Fourteen, introduced on February seventh, twenty-twenty-three, are under consideration by the General Assembly related to the creation of the city of Buckhead, and whereas SB One Thirteen and SB One Fourteen were given a due-pass recommendation by the Georgia Senate State and Local Governmental Operations Committee on Monday, February twenty-seventh, and whereas, if passed, Senate Bill One Thirteen and Senate Bill One Fourteen could have negative financial implications for Fulton County, Atlanta public schools, and the city of Atlanta and other existing cities. And whereas the office of the governor, of the Georgia Governor Brian Kip, has issued a legal memorandum raising questions about the constitutionality and financial impact of SB One Thirteen and SB One Fourteen, therefore, be it resolved, Fulton County Board of Commissioners opposes any legislation that would have significant negative consequences for Fulton County government and its operations. And be it further resolved, the Fulton County Board of Commissioner opposes SB One Thirteen and SB One Fourteen, and urges members of the General Assembly to vote against the passage of SB One Thirteen and SB One Fourteen in this biennial-
Biennial.
-session. And be it further resolved, that the clerk to the county commission is hereby authorized and directed to send copies of this resolution to the clerk of the Georgia House of Representatives and Secretary of the Georgia Senate. Be it finally resolved, that this resolution shall become effective upon its adoption, and that all resolutions and parts of resolutions in conflict with this resolution are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Passed and adopted by the Board of Commissioners of Fulton County, Georgia, this first day of March, twenty-twenty-three.
All right, I'd like to move approval of this resolution. Can we get this? I'm sorry. Thank you. My IT person here?
No. Dana did it instead of you.
So I'd like to move approval of the resolution. I have a second by Commissioner Arrington. Any discussion? Any discussion? Commissioner Barrett?
I just have a quick question for the county attorney. I think we have to refer to it as the city of Buckhead City, which, in the first line of the resolution, it just says city of Buckhead, because there's already Buckhead, Georgia, just to be clear. Also, I just want to be on record as the commissioner who represents all of Buckhead that this is crucial, and I would love to have everyone's support of this. Thank you, Commissioner, and I'll take responsibility for the error in the, leaving out the extra city.
Okay. Commissioner Thorne, you want to be heard?
Yes. Why are we just getting all-
Just a minute, just a minute, just a minute. On this, on the, Commissioner Arrington-
Oh, yeah.
Just a minute, just a minute. Commissioner Arrington.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was actually going to make a motion to do just what this resolution does, and so I'm glad to see that it's there. I don't think people have really thought through the unintended consequences, like Jessica stated, as in regards to schools and what schools their children will go to, and how that will impact APS, Fulton County schools. And so I am glad and happy to see this resolution and happy to support it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Thorne?
Yes, I just wanted, I mean, we're bombarded with information as we're sitting here. Like, why weren't we given this?
Commissioner, this has, I think that's a very fair question. This has moved very quickly, more quickly than expected. The governor's memo was issued late yesterday. It was in this morning's paper, and we, again, Chairman Pitts and I had a conversation late yesterday afternoon, so apologies. You know, recognize that this is a last-minute, being brought before you. We did send a quick email yesterday with some of the things we thought the board might want to consider, just based on questions I've received in my office, but yes, that is the reason, that this is really in response to some rapid changes that have occurred down the street.
Okay, because I attended in Buckhead a meeting on this, and a lot of these questions, but I haven't had time to read through all of them, but a lot of these questions were answered in that meeting, and there was going to be, my understanding, no changes to Atlanta public schools. They were going to still stay in the school system, so I'm getting conflicting information here, and I can't verify it from, you know, anybody, because the people that were presenting it were very informed. So for me, it's, you know, I just, I'm not going to pass anything if I don't fully understand it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Barrett?
I just want to ask a quick question here for clarification. It is true, is it not, that there is not a single elected official from Buckhead, be it state-level, city, or us, that supports this, correct?
That is my understanding, Commissioner Barrett. I haven't, you know, polled personally, but that's, that is what I have heard in conversation, that the city council members from that district and that the state representatives in the House and the Senate for that specific community are not in support.
Yeah, I also want to be just clear on the fact, just in case there's any confusion for people reading or looking at this or listening to us, that this is by no means something that the citizens of the area of Buckhead, the neighborhoods in Buckhead, want. This is a small group of people who have had to go out of the district to find state senators elsewhere to propose these pieces of legislation, so this is coming not even from anybody in Buckhead, but from others. And to answer your question, yes, the schools will, in fact, be affected. I've heard from school board, from Atlanta public schools, there are schools in the district that would just be no longer part of Atlanta public schools, and those kids would not have a place to go on day one.
Commissioner Ophter Rockland?
Not to belabor the issue or the point, thank you, Jessica Corbett, because at the end of the day, when we don't take action, or we don't come together and find out the facts, then we yield the appearance that we are approving something. And I think it's very important, as elected officials, that we take the time, even though it may be at the last minute. I understand you talked with the chairman on yesterday, but this is the thing, when we, as a body, is silent, it is received as though we support something. And many times, people will take that information in the community as though we, as a body, don't have a problem, or more importantly, we support something. And so I know this is at a very late time, but we, as a body, must accommodate and know that this is a very important issue. I have received calls on both sides of the coins, but I cannot move forward with support of something with unintended consequences that is going to affect not only our businesses, our children, it will affect, it will have far-reaching effects that we don't even know. And so I think, just to say that I appreciate the leadership here, that we are taking a statement on this, we are letting individuals know where we are as a body, and I appreciate your efforts in making sure that we know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Vice Chair Ellis?
A couple of quick remarks. I don't necessarily believe, when it comes to state legislation, that, you know, us not taking a particular action on an issue, you know, signifies that we are definitely in support of, just because there's so many issues that come forth, and that's their role, and the play in terms of vetting through legislation, not ours to go through and sort of, you know, debate and look at everything that they bring forth. Couple of things on this, and I, I have not read this stuff, but other than what stuff that's been in the press, and it does look like a pretty sloppy piece of legislation that's put forward, that does have a lot of, you know, a lot of questions that need to be answered, you know, and I respect the governor's office and their executive council in terms of the things that they brought forward regarding the constitutionality of it, and I do think that bears serious consideration, you know, as we consider not supporting it. One thing I do think, I think there are two distinctive issues, and these can be two distinctive issues. We, as a board, generally have not taken positions around whether citizens wanted to have the right to, you know, annex into a particular area, create a separate city. We didn't, you know, we did not take, you know, particular positions on that related to the city of South Fulton. So there's some precedent on that particular issue, but I think this is sort of not necessarily speaking to that specific issue, but to the nature in which this particular, these two particular pieces of legislation appear to be written, and that's what, you know, I guess we're taking a vote on today, not necessarily, you know, the, if something were to be modified, it would give the citizens a right to vote in that particular area, should they so choose. So I think that there are, you know, some distinctive issues that play with this, with this, with what's before us in terms of if we want to take a position against these two Senate bills that is separate and distinct from taking a position relative to, you know, giving people the right to determine, you know, kind of their form of government. I think they're two different, two different issues, so those are my comments. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Thorne?
Yes, I was driving through a lot of Buckhead, and I noticed a lot of signs in support of Buckhead City. I saw very few against, like I had to look to actually, oh, there it is, for the first one. So I do believe that the people of Buckhead should have the right to vote, and they can turn it down if they don't, they don't want it to go through, but I do think the questions need to be answered. My understanding was there was going to be no effect on the Atlanta public schools because there's a law that limits the number of school boards that you can have in the state of Georgia, and we're at that limit, so they have to just go along with the APS schools. So they were just going to, basically, instead of an Atlanta city tax, my understanding was it would say Buckhead City tax, but all the other taxes would stay the same, so the schools will still get their funding. Now, what you mentioned about the voucher, you know, does that affect the vouchers if they're not within the confines of Atlanta public schools? A lot of that stuff's very interesting, and a lot of things that, frankly, I don't think we can vote to support or not support when we don't know the answers to everything until these answers are answered. That's my two cents.
Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with my colleagues who have spoken before me concerning the impact, the negative impact- impact of these two bills. First of all, we have not spoken about the financial impact, not only to Atlanta, but to Fulton County. And then let's just be for real, there's some underlying discrimination in the impact to the children and the Atlanta Public School system. And I want to ask you a question, because I keep hearing that we're late, and so I'm trying to understand how we're late, because I was receiving text messages and calls on Monday saying that these two bills had just passed, and so how are we late? Because that just happened on Monday, and everyone was like, this is just going really fast at the last minute.
Commissioner Hall, I think what you said is accurate, that legislation this time of year, especially right before crossover, can move very quickly. And these bills did receive, on a very close margin, a due-pass recommendation from SLOGO, which is their committee, on Monday. So this is the first meeting since that happened, and so we brought this before you today.
All right, because I don't want to give the impression to the public that, you know, our intergovernmental affairs people are running behind or late presenting things to us. And I know the text messages that I received on Monday, they were very, they were very in line with what was actually going on with these two bills. And I want to say that, yes, we do need to always try to, in situations like this, where there is a huge impact, negative impact to our residents, we do need to weigh in on where we stand. It just gives it more strength and power. So it is very important for us to do that. People look to Fulton County, as the chairman always says, Fulton County is a big deal. And so people look to us for guidance and to see what we're doing in every aspect of anything that impacts our residents. And we serve the same residents as the city of Atlanta. They are our residents, and so we need to show our support or our opposition, and in this case, our opposition is very important. Thank you so much for your work, ladies.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Hall. Commissioner Arrington?
Commissioner Thorne, I would be happy to talk with you and help point you in the right direction. This is not the first time that we have addressed this issue. We addressed a similar issue with the creation of the city of South Fulton. To be very clear, only residents in the city of Atlanta can attend the Atlanta Public Schools. Anyone outside of the city of Atlanta is required to attend Fulton County Schools. So that is a fact, right? That, there's no wavering on that. We had to deal with the issue with the creation of the city of South Fulton, because in particular, with some of the areas that didn't get annexed or were trying to get annexed, there were schools, Randolph Elementary, Sandtown Middle School, would have been completely shut down and set there vacant. In this scenario, North Atlanta is in Buckhead. It will be shut down, well, I don't know if it'll be shut down, it'll be empty, right? It'll be empty, because only city of Atlanta students can attend that. So I don't know who was presenting at that meeting, but the ci, only people that can attend Atlanta Public Schools are residents of the city of Atlanta. And while I do respect the right of the citizens to vote, as I think Commissioner Ellis stated, this is different than the creation of a city out of a county. This is a derivative, a city of a city, right? This is something completely different, and so I'm absolutely opposed to it. And I would, colleagues, like to add Fulton County Schools to this list in paragraph three, where it says Fulton County, Atlanta Public Schools, the city of Atlanta. And I want to make sure that we specifically list Fulton County Schools, because then Fulton County Schools and the parents will have the burden of trying to place all of the students from North Atlanta in existing Fulton County Schools. And all of the students at those Fulton County Schools will have the burden of having overcrowded classrooms. And there'll be a big old building, old IBM building up in Buckhead sitting empty. So...
You want to add Fulton County Schools after Atlanta Public Schools and where's the third where is?
Yes.
All right, I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Barrett?
Yeah, thank you for that, Commissioner Arrington. That was a very good explanation of exactly what the school situation is, and I would also just like to add to that, that as those kids who live in Buckhead and attend Atlanta Public Schools are displaced, they will also have to be transported, in some cases, to a long, a long distance, meaning their parents will have to drive them, or there will have to be bus routes or whatever, to get those kids to a school. And this will all have to be decided, and I think you made an interesting point, Commissioner Thorne, that we don't have all the information. While this legislation is being considered without any provisions for a lot of this, which means it's extremely dangerous. If this were to take effect, and in fairness, it would go through the House vote, and then it would have to be on the ballot, but nonetheless, if this were to go all the way to the end and be voted in, there would be no plan for the schools. And that's just one thing for which there is no plan. So again, as the, as the commissioner representing Buckhead, who has heard from my neighbors and my citizens, this is not what they want. And also, I just want to add that using the, that the fact that you've driven through, driven through wealthy neighborhoods and seen signs is irrelevant. There's a lot of high density in Buckhead, you can't put a sign out front your condo. So the fact that you're not seeing signs for Atlanta United has, has nothing to do with popularity of Buckhead City.
I represent Buckhead, too. Thank you.
My apologies, sir. You and I both.
Thank you. Just for the record. All right, any other comment?
Yes.
Commissioner Arrington?
The city too busy to hate. The city too busy to hate. If only we could make it the state too busy to hate.
All right, the motion before us is to approve. Let's vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, six shades, one abstention.
All right, Ms. Corbett, you also mentioned the pending legislation. Don't know yet whether it's been introduced or not regarding the magistrate court.
Yes, sir.
What do you know about that?
That bill does not have a number yet, and as written, it would seek to create a clerkship under the magistrate court that would be appointed by the chief magistrate judge. And this was a matter that was discussed by the Board of Commissioners a few months ago, and again, that was, that bill was, as I understand it, has, is in the process of being introduced by Representative Cannon, although other legislators have also been part of that discussion.
So it has not been introduced yet?
It has, it does not have a bill number yet, so we are anticipating...
Has it been introduced?
It was, a draft was circulated to the delegation. It has, is not in the hopper, which is the method of introduction.
Should we, should we wait until it's introduced before taking a position? What? I put a call in to Representative Cannon when I heard about this nonsense last night, and I haven't heard back from her yet, unless she may be under the weather.
I'm sorry to hear that, Mr. Chairman. We have circulated it to this board. We, I think the board's input would be appreciated, but I'm not clear about what your position is across the board.
Okay, bless. All right, Commissioner Hall?
I was looking for HB 505, and just wanted to know if you know anything about that bill.
Hold on, are you, are we, is that the magistrate one?
No, no, are we still talking about the magistrate one?
I wanted to talk about magistrate, but I'm, I was going to wait my turn.
No, no, go ahead. I will flip to the end so that you can discuss that, okay?
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Abdur-Rahman, we're on the magistrate. You have the floor.
Yeah, I received a lot of phone calls about this, and the here again unintended consequences. As much as I would like to support our delegation chair, there are too many questions about this that's not being addressed. And at the end of the day, my duty as an elected official to Fulton County Board of Commissioners, commissioners, I have to oppose anything that looks like, even in a very small manner, to usurp our power. And that's what it looks like to me. And so I am more than open to have a conversation with you all, to make sure that my understanding, or with the county attorney, to make sure that my understanding, but reading the bill of what I saw, I was very uncomfortable with it, and I received a lot of calls from other colleagues that were at the state and the city level that were very uncomfortable with it. And so I can't, and I just want to go on record, as what I've seen and my understanding, I would not be able to support it, but clearly, you know, if you all want to weigh in, the county attorney or you, Jessica, I'd be more than happy, but that's what I see it as being.
And Commissioner Abdur-Rahman, I know there are others in the queue, but I just wanted to comment quickly, that I think that is one of the challenges, is that this was, this arrangement that is in place today was created through, by local action, and to now create something through state action would then require, if there was a desire to unwind that at some point, would then require new state legislation. And generally, this board has always taken a position in support of home rule issues. So I think that is one consideration for this body. Thank you.
Vice Chair Ellis?
Yeah, on this particular issue, I guess, two things I don't like, I mean, number one is that this is, this is an internal issue that we should resolve, right? It doesn't need to be a piece of legislation, and I don't think it was proper for the magistrate to go about soliciting that without, and putting it out there without really any input from us. I'm not going to excuse either party in terms of their inability to work together, which is inexcusable in and of itself, but we just need to, I would urge us to take opposition to this and let our delegation know, and that it is our intent, that we're, we're going to get this addressed internally and, you know, come up with some, some form of solution. This is, you know, as we discussed at that one meeting, when it was here, this is sort of, you know, really beyond appeal, but this has sort of continued on in the way it has.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Commissioner Arrington?
Colleagues, I want to offer a different view on this. The reason that this legislation is before, or being considered and proposed right now, is because of our failure to act. And so before I finish, I'm going to make a motion to give the magistrate court clerk the 58 positions back, and the whole magistrate court down on first floor, because we could be done with this today, right now. But this is, those two people, those two officials are unable to work together, period. End of statement. There's nothing else to be said. Those two individuals are unable to work together. We and they still have the responsibility to serve the citizens. And the only way that I can see that that happens is if we unwind the resolution and give the 58 positions, or whatever it is, I don't know, maybe 59 positions, I believe it's 58, to magistrate court, along with all of the equipment and people on the first floor. The superior court clerk's office is upstairs on the ground floor. When you walk in, magistrate court office is downstairs. So my motion is going to be that we give the magistrate court the 58 positions, or whatever that number is, if it's not 58, so that we don't have to talk about this again.
So do you want to make a motion now, or?
Yes, sir, I think I just did.
All right, so the motion by Commissioner Arrington is to provide the 58 or 59 positions to the magistrate court. I would hope that we would, as strongly as we can, love him like a brother, but we're in the process now of actually proposing a consolidated effort, and this would preempt all of that, so I would hope that we were voting against that, that motion. Is there a second? Is there a second? All right, that motion fails for lack of a second. Commissioner Hall?
Okay, I would second that if I knew that we were going to address keeping the clerk whole as well, but there are many pieces to this that need to be addressed, because if you take 58 positions from the clerk, then what is the impact on the clerk's office ability to continue to efficiently and effectively do their job? Because it was my understanding from a conversation that I personally had with the clerk, that these positions are not just only doing the magistrate court work, that they are doing additional work. And so those are things that need to be addressed in this, there's a whole business process, reengineering process that needs to take place to really make sure that we make the judge, Judge Cassandra Kirk, whole, but also to keep the clerk's office whole. So that is my stance on that. And what I was saying earlier is, there is a bill, House Bill 505, that says they're going to make it a felony to protest, and I wanted to know if you knew something about that, if you could give us...
I think that one's in debate right now, and I'm going to ask Ms. Calhoun if she can share an update.
Good morning. Fran Calhoun, Department of External Affairs. House Bill 505 is a very small, two-page bill that does say that, it provides a 20-year sentence, up to a 20-year sentence, for, and makes it a felony if violence, an act of violence is committed during a protest. They also use the term riot in the bill. This bill is being debated on the floor right now. It does appear that it will pass the House, and some of the questions, of course, is the length of time to perhaps potentially be served, as well as the, the rank of, of the criminal charge. And then also, what this definition of violence, what does that look like? What does that mean? It's, it's a very vague and very brief bill, it just doesn't have a lot of meat in it to really kind of better define. So if the board wishes to oppose it, we would have to do something in the Senate likely.
Thank you.
Commissioner Barrett?
I just wanted to get back to the magistrate conversation, just briefly, to say that I don't, while I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Arrington, I don't think this was a failure of ours in terms of not acting. I think by not changing something, that is an action. At the moment, we have said that they are to operate the way they have been operating, and so I think if you want to use the word failure, the only failure is that we haven't given in to the demands of one side or the other at the moment, and are considering other alternatives. That said, I think the issue on the table legislatively is, do we support or not the state making this decision for us? And I think it's probably fair to say that none of us want to lose control of the county business. And so in that regard, I would think it would be important to make this something that we stand together against at the state level.
Vice Chair Ellis?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, there's a lot of the Commissioner Arrington said that I agree with. I don't necessarily agree that, you know, this is, this is our fall of a failure act, because I don't think we, we didn't get elected to be, you know, kind of divorce court up here. These are two elected officials entered into an agreement, we structured it, and they can't get along with each other. And we shouldn't be in a position to try to have to mediate those particular differences between two adults that entered into a consenting agreement. between two adults that entered into a consenting agreement. Now, if they can't make it work and we can't come up with some other thing that's going to work with a consolidated court, I got my doubts about that, given the parties that would be engaged in doing the consolidation. So I think that we just, you know, the concept of that I'm in support of, but I don't know that we've got the parties that could make that work that are here within us today, here with us today. But I'm generally in support of the idea of breaking it up, moving it out. But what I want to see is it needs to be budget neutral. The idea that we're going to allow something to happen, add the positions into it, and then we're going to break it up and we're going to increase our financial responsibility just because the two parties couldn't work together, that's not acceptable. So, you know, if I'm, you know, we want to look at bringing something forward that does break this back out, it indeed does need to be budget neutral. And I'm not in support of any sort of legislation going forward to the state. This is just something we need to reach agreement upon, you know, internally. And we need to tell the two parties that they need to make it work, whatever it is we agree upon.
Commissioner Harrington.
So I just want to add some perspective and history. I was here when the request was made by the magistrate court judge to use the clerk as the clerk of the superior court in a dual role as the clerk of the magistrate court. I was also here when the magistrate court judge came back and asked for the additional 58 positions. We gave them to her. The clerk of court has 240 people. 240. I pray to God that they are not being worked out of class and doing more responsibility than what they're supposed to be doing. So the 58 positions belonged to the magistrate court. They were given to the clerk of superior court because the magistrate court judge, chief judge, chief magistrate judge wanted to use the clerk of the superior court at that time. You all are right, this is not our fault, but we have been aware that they have been unable to work together since at least 2019, which is four years ago. We paid for lawyers, we paid for mediation, all of that in 2019. It's now 2023. I'm going to make a motion again for the 58 positions, for it to be budget neutral. And that is my motion. The 58 positions need to be returned to the magistrate court. The whole, everything down there, all of the equipment and pens and pencils, all of that stuff, this magistrate court needs to remain with magistrate court. The two have to be separated. We can do it now, we can do it next week, or we can wait four more years. What do y'all want to do?
All right, I will rule that that is a proper motion, even though it sounds like the other, the difference between his, the motion that's on the floor, not on the floor yet, the motion that's being proposed by Commissioner Harrington is that it be budget neutral is radically different from his original motion. But again, I would hope that we would not support this and we would wait. We cannot govern and legislate based on the fact that two grown women can't get along. That's not our problem.
Mr. Chair, as the only practicing attorney, as the only practicing attorney that's been practicing for 26 years in both of those courts, again, we can do it today, we can wait four more years, or we can let the state do it. What y'all want to do?
Okay, all right, the motion by Commissioner Harrington, is there a second? All right, there's a second now to the motion that it be budget neutral. That has been seconded by Commissioner Ellis.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. And I'd like to offer up a slight amendment to what Commissioner Harrington has proposed. And that that be that we not act to specifically vote on that today, but that we vote to allow that that proposal, as you proposed, be brought back to us in a clear resolution with a financial understanding of it, how it would take place, just to ensure that we're not doing anything, you know, just verbally right here, you know, that's going to create some unintended consequences there. I'd like to have it fully before us. And if there is an alternative proposal that we're supposedly working on, have those both before us. And we vote this thing up or down, one way or the other, whichever way we're going to go.
Do you accept that, Commissioner?
I accept that as a friendly amendment.
All right, Commissioner Hall. Now, the friendly amendment has been accepted by Commissioner Harrington.
Yes, I heard that. And I was going to make a friendly amendment that we make sure that these, that there are no functions that these 58 people are doing that may impact the clerk's office negatively, that we make sure that that's not.
I will absolutely accept that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Barrett.
I'm comfortable with all these amendments and what Vice Chair Ellis said, but I don't think we really need to pass any legislation to have that happen, or pass a motion rather, to have that happen. I think we can just have that happen. I also want to point out that everybody keeps saying they can't work together. I agree, it's not our problem to deal with that, but also they are working together. So they are both working, the magistrate court is working, the clerk is working. Are they working well? Again, not our problem. It's not like the magistrate court has come to a dead stop. So I just think it's important to note that we have, we have this system set up the way it is. They have to operate within it. I don't really care if they can't get along, that's their problem. And we need to stay cost-effective here and not solve, you know, a fight between two people.
All right, Commissioner Harrington, you want to be heard again?
Yes, I think, you know, we just. Colleagues, I would just say that, you know, the sooner we handle this, the better. I'm fine with making it budget neutral, I'm fine with making sure that there are no unintended consequences for magistrate court or for the clerk of superior court. But, you know, we cannot deny the history of this. Magistrate court may have not come to a halt, but they are not operating at their optimal level. There was an agreement, there was a settlement that was in place until the end of December 2021. And so for all of 2022, they have not been functioning properly. How do I know this? Because I have clients with evictions that haven't been to court. Haven't been to court, they've been in there for 12, 18 months, they hope they can stay 12, 18 more months rent-free. We have a duty and an obligation to put these people in a position so that they can run their own offices. I don't want to tell the clerk how to run her office. I don't want to tell the chief magistrate how to run her office. But we do need to give them the resources that are necessary for them to operate. And I believe with someone with 240 people can make up the difference in those 58 positions. And I'm confident that the magistrate court will function better and cases will be heard more efficiently and in a timely manner if they are given the clerk positions back that this board granted them and expanded for them when they came and asked. She asked for another 39, I think she had 19 people. And then she came back and asked for another 39 people on top of that. And so all she's asking for now is to get those 58 people back. And, you know, divorces are hard, right? People splitting up. But we can't move forward until the split is done. And if we don't want the state to act, the biggest way for the state not to act is for us to act.
Commissioner Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree, Commissioner Harrington. First of all, we can't make these two women work together. And we've seen that in the fact that we're still sitting here talking about this years later. And I'm really tired of walking around Atlanta and Fulton County having people come up to me about the eviction situation. It's really turned out to be a big issue. I even received an email, a long email from Herman Russell, the family, the Russell family about the evictions and the fact that we need to move on resolving this issue. And then a gentleman who's the head of some type of apartment association, who was at the state speaking to the state legislators, he walks up and says, there's all these, you know, these two women are talking and people are talking about this situation and it's really making us look incompetent. We need to do something. We've been, we've tried all the other stuff. Mr. Chairman, you have tried to get them to speak to the county attorney, to Alton Adams. Is it Alton or Alton today?
We're going to hear from him, it's Alton.
It's Alton today. So, you know, you've tried to get them together with everyone possible to resolve this and we're still sitting here talking about it. And so it's time for action. Because this is really, it's spreading beyond the walls of Fulton County. It's spreading across to the state capitol and everything. And it's just, it's really ridiculous. So that's my two cents, I'm ready to vote.
All right, Commissioner Barrett, then I'd like to hear from Mr. Alton, strike that. Commissioner Abdur-Rahman and Commissioner Barrett, then I'd like to hear from Mr. Adams as to where we are on the consolidated effort. Commissioner Abdur-Rahman.
Thank you, Chairman. I, wanting it budget neutral and wanted a clean separation, I believe requires input from our county attorney and also requires input from our executive team. I, in theory, do support Commissioner Harrington and I've been one of the biggest advocates of us doing something before it even got to this point. What I'm not an advocate for is a knee-jerk reaction. What I'm not an advocate for is making a vote today on something that I do not have all of the information from. As much as I want to support this and as much as I want to say this could be the answer, I don't have everything that I need in front of me in order to make that decision today. And I think we do a disservice when we come on the floor at the Board of Commissioners meeting with information based on what somebody else did, one at the state, two, this is something that I have to say we knew was a problem. Everybody in this room knew was a problem. But what's a bigger problem if we move on something today, not having all of our information in front of us? And so what you're doing, you're making a decision based on emotion and not intellect. And that's not to say that it's not a smart decision. And it may be a decision that needs to be made later with the same components. But I'm not ready to make it today because I need some questions answered. And once I get those questions answered, if we can come back in two weeks and pass it, I would love to do it. But today I cannot, because today if I do it, I'm doing it off emotion and not all the facts that I need to have in order to make sure we're not at this position again, that we're not at this juncture again. So I would say that with all due respect, Commissioner Harrington, I do in theory respect and hear what you're saying. I've been hearing what you've been saying all the while and I've been supporting it. But I still need to get some information from Mr. Adams. I still need to get some information from the county attorney so I can make an informed decision what's best for this situation. Because one, it has lingered too long. And two, if we have unintended consequences or we have some other issues, we need to deal with everything now. Thank you.
I think that's why Commissioner Ellis recommended, she's called my name.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. You have a question for Commissioner Harrington?
I'm asking, what I'm asking is, can we, if we, if the questions are answered, do you, would you have a problem with this being put on the next agenda? With all the questions that we need answered?
I believe that that is the motion that is before us. Commissioner Ellis asked for it to be brought back and I accepted his friendly amendment.
Okay, thank you.
And so it is for it to be, I think as it stands now, it is for it to be brought back to us, written out. And not only do we need to speak to all the people that you mentioned, but we obviously got to talk to the two main people.
Exactly, exactly.
The clerk and the chief magistrate.
Exactly, so, okay, now that you've said that, I can support it.
Commissioner Barrett, no. All right. Anyone else? This is a mistake, ladies and gentlemen, but let's vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, four ayes, two nays, one abstention.
Next item. But wait a minute, I just had to ask to hear from Mr. Adams about where we are on the consolidating. We are making progress, by the way, with the two ladies that are in question. But Mr. Adams, you just put this on the record for us, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of things. I just want to point out that, because I think it's important we operate from the same fact base. Magistrate court never had their own clerk. The clerk before it was moved to superior court was actually in state court. It was moved at the request of the magistrate court because there were some issues in terms of the relationship between the magistrate judge and state court judge at the time. So they never did have their own structure. So when we talk about breaking it out, we're really not breaking it back to where it was. Because where it was would mean we would move it back to state court. What we're talking about is doing something very different than what existed when magistrate court was actually set up in the first place. You have asked that we look at the concept of a unified clerk, unified administration. It's something that in talking to CFO, we have talked about for quite some time. It's also been the recommendation of a number of studies that have been done that we, in fact, the county has paid for over the years. And in some cases, you could say it's best practice, but it's certainly something that has worked successfully in Gwinnett County. Not that we necessarily need to copy them, but it has been worked very successfully. They have one clerk, they have one administrative function. And they get along really well, right? Because the chairman and I went out and so did the county attorney and visited with them a few weeks ago. So in terms of where we are, we're in the process of putting together the information in terms of what that would look like. We haven't done the analysis to Commissioner Harrington's question about what the revenue, what the cost impact would be. I will tell you, it's not going to be zero. There will be some financial implications. There's also going to be some operational implications because you can move the positions, but it doesn't mean that the people are going to want to move. And so there are a number of operational and financial implications to doing this that we ought to take a look at, in my view, my recommendation, before the board would necessarily say this is something we should move forward with. You've asked that we work on that, we are in the process of working on it. And we can bring back certainly some of our preliminary recommendations at the next BLC if in fact that is your request.
All right, Commissioner Barrett.
I just have a quick question, Mr. Adams. It's been brought up a couple of times now in this conversation that there's a backlog on the eviction cases in particular. Commissioner Hall brought it up and it is definitely true. I have also spoken to the folks at Russell as well as the folks at the apartment association. And I just want for clarity to ask about the reasons for the eviction backlog. Because my understanding is it's not, it's not because of the clerk situation, but rather because of COVID, the backlog from COVID and then also issues with now the way things are proceeding with the marshals not having some of the staff that they need to do things more quickly. So I just wanted to get some clarification on that.
That's my understanding as well. And just as a bit of background, I have been working, I first got involved in discussions with Chief Judge Kirk and the clerk three years ago, when I first joined. When in fact, that MOU between the two of them was in place. And have tried to work, right, to find, to make sure that we are able to continue moving forward despite the. that we are able to continue moving forward despite the, the, the personal issues. And, uh, and I do think that while there may be some challenges, most of those challenges, I think around, around some of the cases has to do perhaps with, do we have enough judges? Do we have enough staff kind of supporting them as opposed to the constraint being in the clerk's office? Here again, happy to bring back some more facts. But my understanding is that if we have some issues, it's probably attributed, attributed to perhaps some other resource issues as opposed to it being based on the clerk not being, uh, part of a magistrate, magistrate court.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hall?
Miss, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Alton, you said that the problem may be that some people don't want to move. What did you mean by that?
What do I, I mean that, um, how do I say this? Uh, culture counts. And, and we have an issue in terms of turnover in magistrate court that I, I personally would be concerned that a number of the individuals that, we can move the positions, but a number of those individuals would probably look to take jobs either in open positions back in the clerk's office or potentially the tax commissioner's office or protect, or potentially the chief appraiser's office rather than be part of, of a new organization.
Thank you.
Commissioner Arrington?
So, I'm not sure where you all are getting your information, but again, I've been practicing across the street for 26 years. There was an agreement in place that ended at the December, between the two parties, that ended at the end of December 30th, 2021. As a result of that agreement ending on December 31st, 2021, the clerk's office stopped providing, uh, uh, hold on. The clerk's office stopped providing functions for the magistrate court judges. The magistrate court judges are being forced now to enter all of their own paperwork and all of their stuff. And so it takes them longer. So the number of cases that we're going over reduced from, I don't know, 20 cases to 12 cases because now the judges have to do all of the clerk functions in addition to performing their role as judges. And so because they have to do that, they're not able to handle as many cases. So, Mr. Adams, I'm not sure where you're getting your information from, but that's inaccurate. Um, and so I, I'm very familiar because I have spoken with them and I have family members that work over there.
Okay.
Right? So, hold on, wait a minute. This is my time. Hold on, hold on. No, you hold on. This is my time. Oh, no, you hold on. This is my time. I have the floor. Mr. Chair, this is my time. I have the floor.
Commissioner Arrington, I'm not saying you don't have the floor. Your motion has already been approved and so we're trying to move.
Well, we're having, we're having further discussion and I'm participating in it.
You have the floor.
We're having further discussion and I'm participating in it.
Please, please.
I, I'm trying to. You keep interrupting me. You keep, there you go again.
You have the floor.
There you go again.
You have the floor.
Stop interrupting me.
Commissioner.
Stop interrupting me.
Order, Mr. Arrington.
Sir, stop interrupting me. Allow me to talk.
You have the floor.
Please be quiet so I can finish.
You have the floor.
Please be quiet so I can finish.
You have the floor.
Please be quiet so I can finish. Okay, thank you. So, the work is not being done. The cases are slowed down because the magistrate court judges are having, having to perform all of the clerk functions since the agreement ended on December 31st, 2021. And that is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. And that is the problem of why these courts are backed up and why they are not proceeding. And anything else that somebody says to you is hogwash. Yes, there's a backlog because of COVID. There are all types of backlogs because of COVID. The reason of this particular backlog is because the settlement agreement ended on December 31st, 2021. And the people under, that should be working as clerks in magistrate court are no longer performing those functions and the judges are having to do it themselves. And it takes longer for them to have to do it so they have to, they can only take fewer cases. Now that is what is going on and that is the reason for the delay.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ellis, you want us to be heard? All right, let's close this out now. The motion by Mr. Arrington has been approved. Uh, we will come back with a, he's been asked to come back with a budget neutral, uh, proposal that we'll look at it in the meantime. We'll ask Mr. Adams to come back as well and we'll have a little intelligent discussion on this issue. But for the state though, a representative to get involved in this who has no idea, no knowledge about what's going on here is, we'll have to deal with that in another manner. You have anything else other than our presentation?
Mr. Chairman, we are about to hear from our federal team. Um, there are a number of bills in the package and in the interest of time, we won't go through those unless there's one that the board would specifically like us uh, to take a position on or that you all would like to take a position on. Excuse me, um, I think this would be the time to do that before crossover day. Also just wanted to note, I understand Commissioner Hall has an item on today's agenda related, also related to a piece of legislation or pieces of legislation with the Crown Act, which are, um, House bills, House Bill 432 and Senate Bill, um, 82. And I don't know if you wanna consider those now or at the time when they would normally be on the agenda.
Uh, we can take it up now if that's more efficient or we can wait. It doesn't.
All right.
All right, we just bring up the federal.
Um, thank you. With that, we will ask the team to please switch over to your federal, um, presentation.
Just a minute, just a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Barrett?
Uh, I just wanted to ask a question, a quick question on the timing, um, with House Bill 30 and crossover day. And, um, I'm just wanting to know if you guys are, uh, your team is doing anything, um, to address making sure that this gets, uh, across. We are, um, continuing to, um, again, remind the members of the commissioners of your position on this. Um, and I don't know that it has been scheduled for its next step yet. Um, I think it is, its next step will be in rules as I understand it. Um, and so, um, there's a lot going through rules right now. It's a pretty heavy volume. Um, so we will remind the, um, committee and see if we can get some information about making an ETA on when it will be on the rules calendar.
Commissioner Barrett, it was on the general calendar yesterday so we expect to see it to hopefully come through rules soon. Great news. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, continue, uh, Ms. Corbett.
Yes, um, team, can you please pull up the federal presentations, the next agenda item? Um, and while they're doing that, I'll just quickly, um, remind everyone that we do have, um, in addition to our state work, um, our federal team helps us with, um, matters of federal representation. Uh, we are right now in a period where, um, some of the members have, um, their earmarks process open. So we're evaluating county projects that are in need of funding that, um, have already been kind of packaged and that is a big part of our federal agenda. Um, we have been engaging with our delegation members. In fact, Chairman Pitts had some visits earlier this week. Um, and we are also, um, doing more and more to engage with the administration on their work, uh, related to Fulton County and our priorities. And as you can imagine, there are many. Um, so I will just ask the team, as soon as these slides come up, to just, I'll ask them to go ahead and introduce themselves as these, and there they are. Thank you.
Good afternoon, uh, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Good to be with all of you again. I'm Clayton Cox, part of, uh, the Federal Affairs Team here, um, work at McGuire Woods. My colleague Scott Binkley. We're entering into our second year with y'all and of course, really enjoying, um, working with Fulton County. So thank you, uh, for allowing us to continue with you. Um, next slide. We have started the year off pretty fast. Um, we had the chairman in DC on Monday. We took him to see Senator Warnock's staff, uh, took him to see Congressman Scott's staff, dropped him off at the White House for a Black History Month reception and made sure that we are vocalizing early and finding out what priorities, um, these, our members have for funding when it comes to earmarks, when it comes to grant programs and other things. Just making sure we're having those conversations now and then sort of putting together, I think, you know, right now we're, we're working through earmarks and what things we will request. Um, and then sort of moving into what, uh, bigger priorities the county has. Behavioral health, public health, public safety, other things. Um, we had the NACO conference in, uh, February that went very well. We had, I think, a majority of the commissioners up for that. Got to sit down, have some one-on-one time. Uh, went to Commissioner Arrington's, uh, Black History Month Film Festival. Uh, got to sit down with Commissioner Thorne, saw Commissioner Abdur-Rahman and Commissioner Hall and, uh, had a great time there. So we're just sort of learning what the county landscape is. We have a new Congress. We have divided government. So how do we sort of, you know, now that, you know, the Congress and the administration is gonna move into implementation of all these major acts and pieces of legislation. So what can we do to make sure that we're positioning ourselves to get the most money, to get the most funds for the county and also advocate on things that are important to the county? Um, we also applied for a, uh, for a, um, FAA grant, uh, to continue our work with the General Aviation Airport, FTY. Um, that was in January. We were able to secure support from both of our senators for that. Um, and continuing to sort of hammer away at making sure that the airport, um, receives the funding and it's been identified as a priority by this board. Jessica mentioned it, earmarks, those are coming up, uh, very soon. Our first deadline is next week. Uh, Senator Ossoff on the 7th, Senator, uh, Warnock on the 10th. So we're moving very fast there. Um, we are also, as I said earlier, these major pieces of legislation that came down the first two years of the administration that's now moving into implementation. So you're seeing new grant programs, uh, new rules coming out. So making sure that we have our finger on the pulse there is a major priority for us. Um, I'll now hand it to Scott to talk about what we are doing going forward. But it's been a busy first quarter of the year.
Thanks, Clayton. Can we have the next slide, please? My name's Scott Binkley. I'm also with McGuire Woods Consulting. It's always an honor to be with you guys and, um, just give a little preview of what we're, uh, gonna be working on for the rest of this year. Obviously, one of the main federal priorities is funding for FTY. And a main focus of that effort will be amplifying the, um, rollout of the master plan this year, uh, when that's done in, uh, very soon. Um, we will continue to work to strengthen our federal relationships. As Clayton mentioned, we had the chairman up in DC this week. Uh, we'll look forward to y'all coming back anytime. Um, but we'll be planning kind of a fly-in as we did last year, um, in the coming months. We have, uh, heard loud and clear from the commissioners and, uh, the external affairs team that one thing that we want to prioritize and set as a goal for this year will be having members of the administration, whether that be, uh, the president, the vice president or, or cabinet level officials, visiting and highlighting things in Fulton County. And so that's something that we have heard as a priority from you guys and we'll be working on that this year. Um, we will continue to monitor and identify grant opportunities. Of course, we support those with letters of, of support and push up behind those with letters of support from the delegation, phone calls, et cetera. And we'll continue to do that. Uh, we'll continue to amplify the successes you guys have, uh, at the federal level with our federal stakeholders such as, uh, the successful E-Wrap program that has now kind of been a model that the White House touts when they're talking about successful E-Wrap, uh, administration of those funds. And then as always, we're gonna be leveraging correct congressional support, uh, for your, your priorities as they arise. And so we'll continue to look forward to working with each of you, talking with each of you individually, to hear those priorities with the executive team, um, and, and push on those at the federal level. Next slide, and that'll just say, any questions?
All right, questions? The federal team, any questions?
Thank you all. Great to be with you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Ms. Corbett?
That concludes our presentations today. Uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Stick around because we're gonna need to take up Commissioner Hall's matter shortly.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
All right, continue, Madam Clerk. It's 12:23. We can get through most of the agenda, I hope.
Page seven, 230088, registration and elections. Request approval for statewide contract as amended to an amount not to exceed $155,000 to provide temporary staffing services.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Commissioner Hall, question?
Yes. Uh-oh, is, uh, well, are you going to speak?
Well, I'm prepared to give a preamble and then attempt to, I think it was, we can, oh, there's Nadine as well.
There she is. All right.
Good morning.
Good morning. Okay.
Good morning, I'm sorry.
Well, look, I'm, yeah, good afternoon. Um, okay, so this is being, uh, decreased down to $155,000? And this is only for the staffing? Is that correct?
That's correct. Um, we removed the, because the trucks are no longer available or that cannot be guaranteed to be available, we removed the couriers from the total and that's what reduced the price.
All right, so this is only for the temporary staffing? And I see there's a lot of last minute paperwork that came. Um, can you explain how the, uh, decrease in staffing took place? And, and just explain exactly what they're going to be doing that is beyond just, um, boxing up documents and moving them?
And could, Nadine, could I help you just to set up? Since this is both the coordination with Dream and BRE, I wanted to say something upfront and then we'll get into the specific questions. I think as you all know, I, the belief is this will be one of the most important moves that we will make. And I say that because this creates election central that we've been, that we've been talking about and solidating three locations into one. But more importantly, and for any of you that have seen it, I can't remember Commissioner Hall, if you've been able to visit yet, but, uh, encourage each of you to visit, but then obviously when we have a ribbon cutting to, to attend that because it's truly gonna be phenomenal in terms of efficiency, but I think also in, in, um, public visibility and insight into our elections process. But this move, while important, is probably one of the most complicated. So this is not the movement of furniture and, and boxes. But as she will explain, which is, I think is what your question is going to get to, there's many, uh, tasks that are non-traditional to a, to a move. So she'll get into the, how documents have to be, uh, filed and scanned. There's a custody set of issues, um, and a number of other things that for this to be successful, need to be sourced. What we found after the board, uh, asked some questions and we looked at both options. Could a staffing company do everything or could a moving company do everything? What we found was really neither adequately could do the entire job. And what we had planned previously was, uh, having some enterprise vans available for a staffing company to effectuate the move. When I think upon further review, a moving company is better prepared to do the physical movement, but there is a staffing component to prepare for the move. And that all then being said resulting us in perfecting and getting bids from both, which the good news is, and while there is now a second agenda item, so one will be to approve the staffing company at a reduced rate and the other will be to approve a moving company at the rate quoted from them, both of which then added together are less than the 305,000 previously estimated. The last thing I wanted to say, because I wanted to correct what I said, said a moment ago, uh, or early when this was being considered for adding to the agenda. There is no retainer for any of these, but they are partners that we have worked with before, both on the staffing side and on the moving side. The, uh, certificate of occupancy, I thought Tim had said in last Thursday meeting we had in hand, but he said it's imminent. We have a couple of other inspections to go through. But that's, I don't think really on the critical path now in the sense of it's not long in coming. But what is critical in my view is getting all this preparation and coordination done because I lived through, as several of you did, that were here at the time, the June 2020 election, when we had a major snafu with a moving company. And I remember being at two locations, uh, that night at about midnight and the moving trucks had still not shown up. So in my view, there's no risk too small to avoid when it comes to elections and specifically to this move.
Yes.
So that's why we're asking for this, uh, after a lot of work between Joe's staff and Nadine. So anything that Nadine can't answer or vice versa, I think the two of them by working together can answer the board's questions and I appreciate it being considered today.
Thank you.
So yes, um, when we were asked to do the cost comparison, we did meet with the moving company. We did a thorough walkthrough through both warehouses and our downtown offices um, to, to explain to them that we have to have, um, data entry into our WDS system, which will produce labels to go on our items. That way we can scan them in and out to ensure things that get moved from one warehouse or from the downtown offices are having exact home. Those shelvings will need to be labeled in a new location. So there's a lot of things we want to ensure that everything is securely transported and it's easier for our staff to supervise the persons doing that compared to moving companies coming in for a few days. So to do all that, to make sure everything's secure, that we know exactly where everything is in a new location, we wanted to have our temp staff come in so that's our, um, is in a new location, we wanted to have our temp staff come in, so that our supervisors can supervise them and have a clean transport to ensure everything is secure. And the moving company cannot do those duties, so we wanted to, the hybrid is a better model for us, since we cannot ensure the rental of trucks.
Well, that makes sense. Now, that resolves the issue in my mind, I understand that. And it sounds like you're doing like, it almost sounds like an inventory tag to make sure that things are properly moved from one location to the next, and then filed in the appropriate manner that they need to be filed. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thorne?
Yeah, I just, I just had a question, like, why are you hiring the different hierarchies of temp agencies? Why, if they're being supervised by your supervisors, why, why don't you just bring in a team of 35 temp workers, all paid the same rate? Like, why, why are some being paid $20 an hour, some are being paid 16, some are being 20, 25 an hour? Well, I guess our cost is up to 3350 when you add on the temp fee.
Correct, so some of them will have different duties, some will do data entry, some will be driving, are forklift drivers, that's why the rates of page range. So they have different duties.
Okay, and then why, you, I thought you projected that this move would take a couple weeks, or did I misunderstand?
It will, it will take a couple of weeks for our staff to come in and do the labeling, to do the palletizing of boxes, and so those things will take a few weeks.
But then, it looks like on here, some of the people are being paid for nine weeks, some are three weeks, some are four weeks, some are two weeks.
Right, it depends on the duties that they're assigned.
So the systems specialist would be working for nine weeks along with the logistics lead?
Yes, so the systems specialists are the persons that are doing the data entry, they will also create all the labeling that has to go to the both warehouses and to the downtown offices, so that's a process that takes more time than the other positions.
Okay, and then what are, what will the election, like, the regular staff be doing during this time?
They will be assisting the temps, also packing supplies, and ensuring the labeling is done correctly, and we're logging everything to ensure everything is moved from the old location to the new location, everything is housed, and it can be found easily.
So, like, one thing, I kind of, you initially had 30 couriers and five fleet coordinators, so it'd be a total of 103,000, and you just took them out, and that's what the moving company is doing now, is what you had as the couriers?
Yes, our couriers were, we're going to be, we're going to be the persons that would load the trucks, transport and unload the trucks, but now the moving company would do those duties, so that's why they were removed.
Okay, so like, the difference between, those two totaled up to 100 and, about $103,000. So would you say the extra 27 is, we're paying 130 now to have that done, is that in supplies and that type of stuff that would be incurred?
Yes.
Okay. I have no more questions, thanks.
Vice Chair Ellis?
Just can we hear that other item right after this?
Can what?
Can we hear the related item right after this? That was molly.
All right. Commissioner Abdur-Rahman?
Thank you, Chairman. Congratulations, I don't think, I've seen you since you were officially, so I just wanted to openly tell you congratulations, and I also wanted to openly say I appreciate you giving me the information, all of the information, all the questions I asked before BOC meeting, so I know everything. I do appreciate, I have been given the information, and anything that I have a question about, you readily answer, meet with me, and I do appreciate that, but I just wanted to openly say congratulations, and I look forward to bigger and better things coming forward, thank you.
Thank you, thank you all for your support.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Thorne, you want to be heard again?
I forgot, are there going to be any other moving expenses that we're going to incur besides this? Because we approved the trucks, and then the trucks were taking off, correct? We're not using the enterprise trucks? So are there any other expenses that are going to come along the way that you can foresee?
No, we don't, we don't have anything else that we're perceiving at this time.
Okay.
All right, the motion on the floor is to approve, motion to approve by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Commissioner Barrett, let's vote, please.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays.
All right, before you leave, let's take up the add-on item which relates to the same issue.
Seven, unanimously with Commissioner, Vice Chair Ellis. Add-on item 230172, real estate and asset management, request approval to increase spending authority in the amount of $130,000 for additional funding to cover the costs in support of the relocation of registration and elections.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Commissioner Abdur-Rahman, question?
No, sir, that was nothing.
All right, a motion on the floor is to approve, let's vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, continue, Madam Clerk.
On page eight, 230157, real estate and asset management, request approval of a recommended proposal in the amount not to exceed $4,845,528 to provide complete design and construction of the replacement of air handling units.
All right, you have a motion to approve by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Commissioner Abdur-Rahman. Any questions? If not, let's vote, motion on the floor is to approve.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. 230158, human resources management, request approval of the proposed plan designed to extend a childcare, elder care benefit to eligible employees as part of Fulton County's benefits package.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Commissioner Arrington. Commissioner Barrett, you have the floor.
I'm not sure who to direct these questions to, but I just had a question about cost. This is sort of listed as showing no cost, but that doesn't seem possible, so what's the cost?
Good afternoon, Commissioner. So what we presented to you is the plan design, we wanted to make sure what we came up with, the plan design met the approval of the Board of Commissioners. If you recall, during the budget process, Commissioner Hall earmarked, I think about $4,000 to $500,000 for this initiative. So now that we've got the, if we get the plan design approved, in a subsequent board meeting, we will bring back the actual agreement with the provider, and you'll then see the cost and how we plan to manage the program and the cost to stay underneath that budgetary item that was approved as part of the budget.
And as part of that, will there be an estimate of how much usage do you expect to have?
Yes, so we have a little bit of data now, but in my opinion, I think it's skewed, because it was data from COVID-19, when we had a number of school closures, so the numbers are a little high, so what we will have, we'll have data on that day, but just take into consideration that it just might be a little skewed from what we anticipate will be occurring into the future based on the new program.
So just to be clear, this item is just for the idea behind it, the copay, et cetera, et cetera?
Correct.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Commissioner Thorne? Commissioner Hall?
Can we check that figure, because I thought it was over 600 and something?
Yes, Commissioner Hall, it was $632,000 for one year.
All right, so you almost shorted yourself.
I was trying to give Hakeem a break.
All right, what's the correct, listen to me, what's the correct amount?
Six hundred?
$632,000, non-recurring.
That's the correct amount, all right.
And I just want to say that this is amazing, because it is not only, it's not just specific to COVID, this is childcare benefits for our employees, and the hourly, the copay is outstanding, it's so low, $3 per hour for in-home childcare, and I just want to check something, because this is amazing, it says personal network backup care, can you just explain that? Because I don't want to assume what I think it is.
Yes, Commissioner, personal network backup care is a component of the, of the Care.com platform. What Care.com, Care.com has built into their platform is, let's say, for example, you have a neighbor that you're, you're very comfortable with, that neighbor is working from home or is in a position to be at home, but you have to report to work, and there's an emergency that requires you to report to work, but your child needs, your child is sick that day. You can arrange for that neighbor to watch your child, and if you pay them, let's say $100, you could submit that receipt to Care.com and be reimbursed, since it's a copay, be reimbursed $75 for your neighbor watching your child, so you could come to Fulton County to perform the services of what our citizens expect. So that's what the back, the personal, personal network care system, how that works within the Care.com ethos.
Thank you, that is exactly what I thought, but I just wanted you to confirm it, and the benefits of this to our employees really shows how much we care for them and their families, thank you so much.
Vice Chair Ellis?
Yeah, I don't know, this, I don't know, to me, this sort of seems backwards, that the concept should come before us, with sort of a clear articulation of what it is and what potential cost would be, and then approval of that, and then the modification, then if approved, then the plan design, proposed plan design to be able to affect it, be brought forward. It just doesn't, it seems somewhat out of order to me, and I'm not... So...
Response, thoughts, comments?
Why isn't that not coming forward first?
I guess the best response that I could provide, Commissioners, is typically, it would have come from HR as a recommendation to the board and a funding approval, but because it was adopted as part of the budget, and now we're kind of reverse engineering.
Yeah, but we did, approval of a budget item versus a formal, you know, kind of plan program are two different things. So to me, this is out of order, and whatever's going to be adopted should come before us first, not this. I, I, I don't, we have a lot of stuff that's in, you know, you know, in budget as a line item, I mean, but that doesn't imply that all aspects of it, you know, have been before us vetted, and, you know, we formally signed on to that in total as a board. So I'm, I'm, I would, I would move that this is held and rebrought back, brought back forward in a, in that reverse order.
And Commissioner, when you say reverse order, you are expecting me to bring back, just so I'm clear, so we, I meet the expectation of what you and the board is about to vote on, you want me to bring back what particularly? Because, I mean, the, the program as, as presented would be the same thing that I would bring back, there's, there's no additional information, other than the agreement that would then outline the cost aspects of the agreement with Care.com, that would be the only other attachment that I'll, I'll bring back, which I plan to bring back in a subsequent board meeting.
Yeah, I think that should come forth first, whatever the agreement's going to be.
Okay.
So we understand it.
So what I can do?
I mean, because we don't like it, and then you, you put this in the air, and you're not going to extend it, I mean, I, I just, it seems sort of backwards to me.
Okay, I, I, at the, at the Commissioner's request, Commissioners, I can, at the subsequent board meeting, I can combine both, the plan design and the agreement that has been reviewed by the county's attorney's office, and then you'll see both as one item, and hopefully that meets your, your expectations, Commissioners.
All right, in the interest of time, the sponsor, Commissioner Hall has no objection to that, is there a subsequent motion to hold, Commissioner Ellis? All right, second. All right, subsequent motion to hold, any discussion on that, let's vote on the motion to hold.
And the vote is open on the motion to hold. And the motion passes unanimously.
All right, continue.
230159, human resource management, request approval to modify the classification section of the classification and compensation plan by adding new titles.
All right, motion to approve, Commissioner Hall, is seconded by Commissioner Thorne. Commissioner Barrett?
Can you just explain a little bit about what this is for?
Oh, sorry, yes, Commissioner, oh, yeah, actually, this is your first one, so from time to time, we work with departments to enhance the classification plan. In this instance, we've worked with the department, and they've identified gaps within the types of jobs that they have in their organization. The HR department has validated that gaps, gaps do exist, meaning that those unique responsibilities that we've incorporated into these new classifications that we've put in front of the Board of Commissioners for approval today do not exist in any clear job description that exists, that is currently in my repertoire. So we asked you on a periodic basis to create these new classifications, once the new classifications are created, we then work with the department and finance to fund the jobs within the departments' respective budgets, and then we go proceed with the normal hiring practices.
Okay, all right, the motion on the floor is to approve, please vote.
And the vote is open.
It's not allowing me to select.
All right, record, Commissioner Abdur-Rahman has voted in the affirmative. Madam Clerk?
And the motion passes unanimously. Under Health and Human Services, 230160, county manager, request approval of resolution to approve a modification of the Fulton County Board of Health fees for environmental health services.
All right, these are new fees, a motion to approve by Commissioner Abdur-Rahman, seconded by Commissioner Hall. Commissioner Hall?
I just wanted to make sure that on page one of the resolution, that there was a correction on line 30, it says, now operate in Fulton County with thing, it should say without, I'm assuming? Do you see that? Page one of the resolution, at the bottom, line 30?
Yes, without.
It should be without, so that correction, I just want to make sure that's made, thank you.
Commissioner Thorne?
Yeah, I was just trying to find out what, where the percent increase in the fees going to be.
It's actually going to be a decrease. Prior to the adoption, it was a $300 annual fee for the mobile trucks, now it's just going to be a one-time $70, $75 administrative fee.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, the motion on the floor is to approve, please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. 230161, senior services, request approval to increase the spending authority for indigent burial in the amount of $21,675.
All right, a motion to approve by Commissioner Abdur-Rahman, seconded by Commissioner Hall, Commissioner Hall?
I'm waiting for a Ledisa. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My question is related to the increase, is there additional funding in the 2023 budget to cover the expected increase for this year?
The total authority for this year and the budget is 418,000. To answer your question, the department does experience underruns throughout the year, so we may possibly have additional funds and will increase the spending authority should we believe that our invoices are trending high. I am scheduled to meet with DFAX this Friday, just to discuss our contract value and the budget for this year, and to discuss how they approve and certify burials to our department.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's vote, please.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously, on page nine. On page nine, twenty-three, zero, one, six, two. Public Works requests approval of the lowest responsible bidder in an amount not to exceed three million, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars to provide construction services for the installation of sanitary sewer within the city of Alpharetta.
All right, favorable motion by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Vice Chair Ellis. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. Twenty-three, zero, one, six, three. Requests approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Milton for watermain relocations in an estimated amount of five hundred and three thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars.
All right, again, a favorable motion by Vice Chair Ellis, seconded by Commissioner Thorne. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, five yeas, zero nays.
Mine did not. It's a yea.
Six with Commissioner Obdo Rockman. Twenty-three, zero, one, six, four. Requests approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Alpharetta for watermain relocations.
All right, a motion to approve by Vice Chair Ellis. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Hall. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays. Under Justice and Safety, twenty-three, zero, one, six, five. District Attorney requests approval of the 2023 Equitable Sharing Agreement and Certification with the U.S. Department of Justice for the Fulton County District Attorney's Office establishing the requirements for participation in the federal equitable sharing program.
All right, favorable motion by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Obdo Rockman. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays. Commissioners' action items. Twenty-three, zero, one, six, six. Requests approval of an ordinance to amend Chapter thirty-eight of the Fulton County Code of Ordinance to Implement the Fulton County Crown Act and for other purposes sponsored by Commissioner Hall.
So motion? All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Obdo Rockman, seconded by Commissioner Arrington. Commissioner Barrett?
I just had a quick question. I saw a, what I believe is a typo on page one, line seventeen. It's, all the other occurrences read "national origin," that one reads "natural origin," so I just wanted to make sure that got corrected in the final.
After you mentioned it before the meeting, we've already corrected that, Commissioner. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Vice Chair Ellis?
I see we got two matters before us related to this, and I understand the second one. I guess my question on the one that's before us now, in terms of, it would appear that it's creating an ordinance that would potentially impact employers within the Fulton County unincorporated area? Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, Commissioner, it would apply to employers within the unincorporated areas of Fulton County.
So I thought, I mean, I thought that we couldn't, as a body, can't create employment law for others.
We can't abrogate employment law that is in place from federal and state laws, but we can add to the protections.
You can add separate, you know, discrimination provisions to state law?
Not to state law. We can add protections that are under the Fulton County ordinances. We can't change state or federal employment law.
So, I mean, as a practical matter for an employer in this particular footprint, it doesn't seem like it would be, what sort of penalty could be remedied against them? Doesn't seem like any penalty could be remedied against them.
As it's currently written, this resolution does not impose penalties on a private employer within unincorporated Fulton. It does voluntarily add those protections to Fulton County as an employer.
Okay. Well, I mean, to me, it's somewhat misleading if it's given the impression that it's creating a ordinance that employers need to adhere to, but yet it has no effect in terms of any penalty related there too. So, I don't know, I just, I'm, I mean, there's a concept, and then there's sort of potential unintended consequences. I don't really, I'm struggling a little bit in terms of, you know, just thinking through the ramifications of that sort of en masse, as opposed to, you know, a separate and distinct issue of a statewide act being considered that would, you know, obviously probably be a little more, you know, strongly vetted, I guess, you know, kind of than maybe what we've done so far to date. So, anyway, that's my concern.
Okay, Commissioner Thorne?
I kind of had similar concerns of how it was going to be enforced. Would it set up a liability aspect for those employers?
So the practical effect of the resolution as currently drafted is that the few, the small number of employers in unincorporated Fulton who would be affected, it essentially acts as an encouragement to be mindful of this, of this issue, but because there are no penalties built in, they would not have additional liabilities under the resolution as currently written, under the ordinance as currently written.
So no one could sue them because of what we passed today?
The proposed ordinance does not contain a separate cause of action that someone could use to sue an employer.
Okay. And I also had a question about, like, doesn't, isn't this, like, already covered under the Basic Civil Rights Act? How would it?
The case law has not completely evolved as to that. There is an argument to be made that this falls within the race and national origin portions of the protections that already exist, but I believe the intent of this legislation is just to make it clear that Fulton County takes the position that that is a protected aspect of your expression.
So it's more just to make a statement than really any meat or substance to it?
So as to Fulton County as an employer, I believe the effect of it is to let our citizens and our employees know that Fulton County government takes the position that that is a protected classification specifically. Okay, thank you.
So the, two parts of this, as I read it, is when you're applying for a position, you can't be discriminated against based upon your hairstyle, and after you're hired, you can't be fired based upon your, in layman's terms, based upon your hairstyle, correct?
The specific types of hairstyles described in the legislation, not any hairstyle. It's as described in the legislation.
What does that mean?
Meaning the legis...
I mean, for example, if Michael O'Connor comes in with a mohawk and pink, with pink hair...
So the legislation describes protections for protective and cultural hairstyles. Fashion choices are not addressed in this particular legislation.
Okay, so he would not be protected with a mohawk?
In that example, I would not...
All right, I just want to make clear.
Consider that protected.
Motion, Commissioner Ellis, you want to still be heard?
Similar to the, if you have hiring entities which have hair restrictions for, you know, whatever reason, you know?
For example, law enforcement has certain hair restrictions for safety reasons.
Right. That doesn't, does this present any issues for them?
That, there's a carve-out for that, that would, we would analyze that in a separate way from, say, someone in a customer service position.
Okay.
All right, the motion on the floor is to approve. Let's vote, please.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, four yeas, zero nays.
All right, next item.
Five with Commissioner Arrington.
Next item.
Twenty-three, zero, one, six, seven. Requests approval of a resolution by the Fulton County Board of Commissioners urging the Georgia General Assembly to enact Bill eighty-two, commonly known as the Crown Act, urging the municipalities within Fulton County to adopt similar legislation if no such legislation currently exists in their jurisdiction and for other purposes.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Obdo Rockman, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Let's vote, please.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, four yeas, zero nays. On page ten...
Just a minute, just, it is, wait, wait now. Yeah, it's one o'clock. That's recess for lunch and executive session. Okay. Recession for lunch and executive session, items of real estate litigation and personnel.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously.
Excuse me. Excuse me, Chairman. I'm sorry to interrupt, but had one motion coming out of executive session. Is there a motion to approve the request for representation set forth in item number one on the executive session agenda?
Is there a motion? Motion to approve by Commissioner Obdo Rockman is seconded by Commissioner Thorne. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. On page ten. Twenty-three, zero, one, six, eight. Requests approval of resolution by the Fulton County Board of Commissioners repealing Resolution twenty-two dash zero nine nine five and reaffirming Fulton County's participation in the Eastside TAD.
I want to go ahead and withdraw it. Commissioner Ellis actually resolved the issue earlier in the meeting.
Withdraw. All right, without objection, that item will be withdrawn.
Twenty-three, zero, one, three, seven. Board of Ethics. The Gates City Bar Association has nominated the Car, Car, Satcher for a full board reappointment to a term ending February twelfth, twenty twenty-six.
Colleagues, I'd like to make a motion here, and my motion is as follows, to, from this board, refraining from taking any action regarding the composition of the Board of Ethics until the pending matter involving a commissioner is no longer pending before the Board of Ethics. That's my motion. I have a motion to approve, seconded by Commissioner Obdo Rockman. Any questions, comments? Not, let's vote, please.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, six yeas, one nay.
Next item.
On page eleven. Twenty-three, zero, one, six, nine. Administrative Committee of the Fulton County Defined Contribution Plan. Chairman Pitts has nominated Commissioner Hall for a full board reappointment to a term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Motion to approve by Commissioner, Vice Chair Ellis, seconded by Commissioner Thorne. Please vote. I would ask to make a friendly amendment to renew Mr. May in that position. Mr. Who? Don May. Position, employee, I don't know.
That's right. I guess he continues to serve until there's someone else appointed, but it just seems that there's an opportunity. Both of those positions expired on December thirty-first, but perhaps Commissioner Ellis is right, the employees need to make, perhaps employees need to make that recommendation.
Okay. We know that, who makes the nomination for, I mean, I have no problem with extending his term, but who's supposed to make it?
I think that is the employee sharing.
That recommendation typically comes forward through a process that the Administrative Committee itself runs to establish the employee representative...
Do they have to be elected? Is that like similar, like, is that one where they have to run? Employee reps have to run for election, or no?
I believe it's more of a voluntary type arrangement where employees present their interest in serving on the committee, and the retirement committee evaluates their interest and makes a recommendation to the board.
Okay. On the floor, motion to approve by Vice Chair Ellis, seconded by Commissioner Thorne. Let's vote, please.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays. Commitment County Manager's Presentation and Discussion Items, just, under Justice and Safety, twenty-three, zero, one, seven, zero. Discussion Jail Feasibility Update.
Mr. Manager, Mr. Adams?
Chairman Pitts, Commissioners. At the last meeting, when the jail feasibility team made their presentation, there were a number of questions that were raised by the Board of Commissioners. The chairman asked if they'd come back and address those questions. We did submit to you the presentation that included the answers to those questions, and so the team, some of the team are here today to take you through that and to answer any additional questions that you might have. They also have some specific recommendations in terms of next steps in the event that you're prepared to ask us to move forward with subsequent actions.
Gentlemen?
Chairman Pitts, how are you, Commissioners? My apologies for my voice today, it's a little hoarse. Again, as Alton mentioned, we were here February first chatting with all of you, and we appreciate the time and all the feedback that you provided us. We have nine questions today, and next slide, please, that we believe answer eight of the questions, and we've added one additional that we think might be helpful for discussion today. So, next slide, please. So the first question, whoop, please back one slide, please. So the first question I'd like to discuss is, please clarify the number of persons in custody with unindicted felony charges. And our summary of that particular topic, as you'll note here, and forgive me for reading, but our analysis of the data available, which is a merge of the jail database and the courts' database, indicates that there is an average of sixteen hundred people who have unindicted charge at the Fulton County Jail. This is an approximate number by our statistician, Patrick Jablonsky. Of that number, approximately eight hundred and sixty have no indictment, okay?
Okay, should we ask you questions as you go along, if there are any follow-up questions?
Yes, please, Chairman. You can interrupt me any way you would like, okay?
Okay, so on that eight hundred and sixty, because frequently what I hear is that, well, there, an inmate may have multiple charges, but that eight hundred number says those are eight hundred folk with no other charges, right?
That is correct.
And that's the crowd that could, based upon some belief, could be released?
That is correct. Well, not necessarily released.
What, well, what's the word then, not released?
It would depend on the charge.
Those are individuals who are not indicted on any charge today. They could then be indicted with, by the DA at her, you know, at her time, and whenever she felt it was appropriate. That would then begin the process...
That would then begin the process for them to be assigned to a Superior Court Judge and to start moving the case along.
But some of that eight-hundred though, whether it's half of them or twenty-five percent of them, I would think they're there and have not been indicted and may not be indicted.
There is a possib-, there's a possibility that, that some of those individuals could in fact arrange for a plea or have some kind of thing once, with, with, before they were indicted, that, that is correct. But here again, we, we, most of the individuals that are, that are in our jail today are there because they have committed, they're, they're accused of committing serious crimes. And so here again, the DA would have to comment on, on what her actions might be. So I'm not sure we could project and say any of them could theoretically be released because you'd have to look at the charges for which they were arrested.
But is it not possible though to, to, we would presumably, we know the names of the eight-hundred plus and who have not been indicted, and we would also know, presumably know, whether their charges are serious or not so serious?
I guess we could go down and categorize those charges, that is correct.
I'm not, I'm not asking you guys to do it, but intellectually it seems to me that we, there's gotta be, I would think that there is a number in our jail who shouldn't, who should not be in our jail. And if that is the case, they don't need to be there, and that, and if they're let go, released, that reduces the number of folk that are in our jail, that's just.
Well, I'm not sure I could say, or anyone could say, that there are people in our jail who should be released. We have a process where those individuals get arrested and then they appear before a judge, judge makes a decision, and then bond, and next steps, I'm not an attorney, but, but here again, that's left to the judicial branch to decide whether those individuals should in fact be in our jail or not, and it's based on a number of factors. So I can't, I don't think any of us could comment and say there are people there who should theoretically not be there.
Okay. Right, that's probably.
And then here again, I'll defer to, to Commissioner Arrington, but I believe that you could, you could be eligible for bond without necessarily having been indicted, is that correct? Because you have bond hearings, yeah, so.
In that group, we ought to know who that, who falls into that category.
Well, that's, you know, we can categorize the individuals and, and we can do some more research, Mr. Chairman, I'm not saying we can't do that. What I'm saying is, I, I wouldn't necessarily jump from, I wouldn't necessarily make the assumption that, that there are individuals who could theoretically be, 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 be released. I think that that's something.
I like what Commissioner Arrington said about on bond.
That's correct, yeah.
I'm sorry, John.
Sure.
Thank you, Alton.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Abdu Rockman.
Thank you Chairman, I just want to weigh in on that since it's one of my priority areas, we want to be very careful about saying that we have eight-hundred-and-sixty individuals that have no indictment, because here in an open forum like that, what that gives to the layperson is that we got eight-hundred-and-sixty people in there that have no indictment, and so the first thing they say is, well, if they haven't been indicted, why are they in there? And it changed the scope of what we're trying to do according to the feasibility study. So I just want to be crystal clear, they may not have an indictment, but it may be another issue, bond, it may be another issue that has absolutely nothing to do with what we're talking about. And the only reason that I'm saying that, because I had to educate myself on that, because when I heard before a particular number, Mr. Adams, to your credit, it, it, it made me think, well, we need to hurry up and try to get these people out, but that's, that's more of, for the lack of a better word, a convoluted issue, because we've got several other issues in there dealing with that. So I just, for the people that are listening, I want to be crystal clear that we don't have eight-hundred-and-sixty people in there that's not indicted, that can be, you know, let out, because that's not the case.
That, that is correct, Commissioner, and here again, because we could spend a lot of time talking about this, if somebody is arrested for a charge, the DA, as I understand it, then has an investigator who goes about gathering things. Some of those things, for example, could be toxicology things, in the case of someone arrested for a drug charge. Toxicology, before they indict that individual, that individual may in fact be in our jail, while they await, await the evidence being gathered, that then feeds into whether the DA will charge that individual or on what charge that individual may be charged. So there are a number of steps that go through, number of things in that process that lead up to someone in fact being indicted.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ellis, Vice Chair Ellis.
Yeah, I just do want to say one thing though, I mean, this, these are numbers, they should be reported, they should be out there, and we should be looking at them all the time. And I think one of the problems when we looked at this entire area is, we interject too much anecdotal into the mix. And really as a body, I mean, you, you know that there's stories behind every numbers, whether it's, you know, in a business or with this, and I think we sort of collectively should get a little bit less concerned about trying to understand every potential issue with it, but instead trying to look at these numbers consistently over time, you know, because the numbers ultimately, they're, they're out there in front of people, then the people behind them collectively tend to work at addressing, and let them do their work as opposed to trying to get down and understand each and every issue behind those. I mean, they're mutually exclusive issues, the number doesn't necessarily mean, mean this or mean that, people can arrive at their own conclusions, but we should not, not be transparent with the public in terms of reporting these numbers, I think it's important to do so.
I, I think the next sentence is key, where it doesn't affect the forecast model, and that's an important component of this, this response.
Excuse me, I have one other question on the previous slide.
Sorry, it's still for Mr. Adams, hang on you guys. I just want to be clear, I, I don't disagree with what Vice Chair Ellis is saying, but I think using that number alone doesn't tell the whole story, and I think there are other numbers that need to be included, so if we are going to report on that number, I think it's important, for example, to include, you know, the number of, of those unindicted who are repeat offenders, for example, and things of, of that nature, because there are reasons, I think, and you already made this point, Mr. Adams, so I'm really just amping up what you said, that there are reasons for that number, and that this is, the justice system is operating this way, judges are making these decisions, et cetera, and while I agree that it's better to have people further along the process faster, I think if we're going to present those numbers, let's just be careful that we're giving as full of a picture numerically as we can.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, continue. I'm sorry, back. Okay, continue.
Chris, would you like to finish your thought there?
Yes, I was just mentioning the next, the next sentence in that same paragraph, actually, where Patrick is keen to point out that it doesn't affect our average length of stay or the bookings, which is what we benchmark the fifty-four, eighty from, so this is a little bit of a rabbit hole for us in terms of, you know, what it means to the big picture. So that's, that's all, thanks.
Shall I move on to slide eight?
Commissioner Ellis, you want to be here?
Okay. So slide eight, we have updated this slide to reflect the current population projections by the Georgia Governor's Office of Planning and Budget. So what's highlighted in the lower end of the slide there, there are a number of population projections there that have been updated that were incorrectly referenced earlier. And the sources are noted on this slide as well.
Vice Chair. Could you all, you, the last statement on the point one, that the two primary drivers are bookings and average length of stay. Could you all generate a scenario that's based upon, and I said this before, I mean, look, you know, there are a lot of divergent interests in this county, and there are a lot of stuff that's been worked on in the context of better policing, make our communities safe, diversion, mental health, et cetera. And there's also, as we just discussed today, there's a great feeling that we're housing people, you know, in, in our jail facilities for a much longer period of time than what they should be, and that we're all not comfortable with that. You know, with the fact that, you know, the thirty-six-hundred lives that are there are staying in there that length of time, that there's some concern about that. So I just, you know, I'm uncomfortable, you know, making a decision on a scenario that sees our average length of stay be at nearly sixty days. I'm, I just don't think that's acceptable as a, you know, body for us to consider, that's that, that's acceptable that our justice system is going to operate in that capacity. I mean, I, I talked to some people, LA County's average length of stay is twenty-seven and a half days, and we're at, you know, we're almost at sixty. I mean, so could we build a scenario, and as I'm, you know, I believe you all said that really sort of a watermark for most people is around thirty days. Could we build a scenario and look at what should our capacity be with the average length of stay at, say, thirty-five days, which builds you a little bit of, you know, cushion in it, but strives to get you to a number that appears to be, you know, a generally doable number across the country? And then secondarily, I know you said you adjusted sort of the population figures to be the correct population figures here, but I'm also find it just, it is tough of a situation as we are in right now in terms of criminal activity within the county. The notion that we are considering something that has our average daily bookings increasing at a greater rate than the rate of population is insane, and also makes me want to just pick up and sell my house and move somewhere else. If that's what the forecast for the future holds from us, is that we're just going to have, as more people move here, we're going to have more criminal activity than what we have right now. And I don't know that, you know, so my ask on the average daily booking sort of, and it does play in a little bit of the population question from talking to some folks, is my understanding that sort of our greatest degree of, the greatest degree of booking activity tends to come from folks eighteen to forty-four years old. Fair?
Yes, I can tell you, Commissioner, that in the, in the model that we developed, it's the age of seventeen to forty-nine.
Okay, so what is that population doing over the next, estimated to do in Fulton County over the next twenty-five years?
The, the rate of increase of that population?
Yeah.
Yeah, we probably have that information, I can provide it for you, we can pull it out, this is total population.
The total population, but, I mean, I guess sort of given sort of what's generally going on demographically right now, the assumption would be that that population is actually not going to be growing as fast in terms of birth rates, aging population, et cetera.
We certainly have that data available to us, it would be interesting to pull that apart.
If it's, if, if it's growing even at a lower rate than what population as a whole is growing, then, and then our average daily bookings are growing greater than the overpopulation, is the population rate as a whole, then I struggle with that too. So could we not build a scenario that would look at, you know, a average length of stay of, say, thirty-five, and, you know, some book, average bookings data, which would appear to be somewhat more realistic than what's on this page? And try to understand what that is, you know, whether that's, you know, seventy, seventy-five? I mean, I, I, we seem to be building a, a scenario for a worst-case scenario. Well, you shake your head at me, but I mean, you know, that we're going to have, you know, average length of stays, you know, at this high level in bookings at, you know, a really increased level?
You're, you're suggesting a scenario that's even more aggressive than the, than the optimal scenario.
Yeah, that's what I'm suggesting, yeah, I mean, so could we build a scenario where average length of stay is thirty-five, and, you know, you know, whatever, do a, look at the, I mean, I, I'm still struggling with how our bookings per day is at fifty-two-point-seven a day, and that's going to grow to eighty-seven-point-eight in twenty-forty-seven. I mean, just that even intuitively doesn't make, that doesn't make sense to me.
That's what our model suggests right now.
Well, I mean, I know that's what your model suggests to you, but if, just living in the world we're living in right now, that intuitively, in looking at the population growth, that doesn't seem to make sense.
It's mathematically derived from that model.
Well, you're going to have to explain to me better the underlying detail behind that model. I mean, if you're, you know, if intuitively we're thinking that the age population that's most getting arrested is the, is not going to be growing at, is going to be growing at a lower rate than the population as a whole. And, but the bookings are going to grow greater than population as a whole. I don't, I mean, it, it, it calls into question the credibility of your model, if you can't articulate to me kind of what all is behind the, behind the iron curtain, so to speak. So, you know, I do think it's reasonable for us to look at, you know, an alternative scenario that's more aggressive than that. And it would be something that's in line with the way more of a, you know, model, you know, judicial system, you know, should work.
Vice Chair Ellis, if I can, I want to address a couple of things you, you raised. You mentioned the average length of stay. The, the, the moderates forecast, which is what was used.
Forty-three.
Shows it going from thirty-nine, can we go back?
Right.
Go back a couple pages?
Yeah, yeah, it's forty-three, right.
To, to forty-three, so it's, it's, so, so it's, it's relatively, it's ten percent increase from, from, from where we are to, 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 it goes from thirty-nine to, to, actually, thirty-nine to, to, to fifty-one under moderate, and, and for the optimal, it goes from thirty-nine to, to forty-three. And, and so that's driven by a number of factors, and we can, we can, we can have Patrick take us through the model. I, I, I think the reason, and, and to your point, we can build a scenario with any assumptions that we want, but, but I would also say that we kind of hired the experts who've been doing this for a while, and I'm not saying we shouldn't push back on them, but, 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 but what I'm saying though is, we can use any scenario we want to generate the model, and, and we can make some assumptions about, that's why they did a range, because we can decide whether we want to build our assumptions on the, can you go back, please? To the, yeah. To the, no, to the one with the numbers? There you go. We can build our assumptions based on the optimal, or the status quo, or the moderate. And quite frankly, they're, you know, like, like recommendations from any professional services, whether it be the doctor, or a lawyer, accountant, we can decide whether we want to take their recommendations or just make a decision in a, in a, in a different direction, and we can run scenarios, because we do have the, the models.
Right.
But, but I do think that the reason that we asked them to build a range was to give us a sense for the fact that we, that, that we truly do believe that in twenty-forty-seven, the average length of stay is going to be somewhere between forty-three and fifty-nine days, and we can pick whatever scenario we want in between those, or we can run alternative scenarios, but based on their best estimate and what they have seen in other jurisdictions, and based on the data, that's the range that we, that we have. But like I said, John, we can go back and build a scenario, that may not necessarily be the recommendation of what this group would say you should expect going out in the future. The other thing I would say is, like any forecast, when you start going out seventeen and twenty-seven, thirty years, you start to have a level of uncertainty that you should expect, and that's why when the, the, the recommendation in terms of the size of the jail, they said, let's build the underlying infrastructure to allow expansion to a number in twenty-forty-seven, but let's not build the cells to anything beyond what we expect in thirty-seven. So there is built into this an opportunity for us to dial back if we feel we've, we've overbuilt. So that's where, that's where the kind of the check and balance is in terms of whether we think we've overbuilt. But I will say that when our current jail was built, it was obsolete the day we opened it.
I under, I understand all that, I've heard all that stuff before, I know we need a new facility, I know the facility needs to be constructed differently, it needs to be built with space that allows for all the other things that happen outside of housing, I get all of that. What I'm struggling with is, what you're showing us is a set of underlying assumptions that's basically saying that all of the work, we're saying that either it's okay for it's okay for our judicial system to continue to work in effectively and people to be housed in jail for an extended period of time and that we're going to arrest and book a boatload of more people all around our county, that that's our future state and that we're comfortable with that. Or are we going to say, we're going to look at, we're going to come up with a reasonable scenario and the expectation from our judicial system, this is our expectation as a board, that it is going to operate in this kind of fashion, where the average length of stay is contained within a reasonably acceptable number. And, and that is what we are, we're holding you to. And that's what we need you to be accountable to, to bring something that's reasonable and affordable to our taxpayers.
And I understand that, but, but there are other things that feed into this. We're also in an environment where we have a legislature that's proposing more minimum sentences rather than less.
I get, I get all that. I mean, I, I get all that, right? But, you know, it's not acceptable for us to run a system where we're having people in jail for this long.
Understand.
So anyway, all my ask is originally is can we redo a scenario, I'm not looking to get into this philosophical discussion about it necessarily, but, you know, can we run a scenario that's based at, you know, a thirty-five average length, length of stay and a bookings number that, you know, is trending less in that kind of growth than what you were showing?
Absolutely.
I mean, that's even, you know, fifteen years go to fifty-two point seven to eighty point four. That's a significant amount more criminal activity.
Right.
Because, you know, then, you know, what this also entails if it says that we're doing this, what does this also mean? Should we be doubling the size of our court facilities over there? Do we need to be doing a feasibility study about how many courtrooms we need to entertain, you know, dealing with all these folks? Is that should also be what this gets contained?
Well, your point is well taken. I mean, at the end of the day, the jail is the end of the, the process, not the process itself. And as we've talked about, uh, I think, you know, we, we have a request and to add one more judge when we probably arguably should have, you know, ten times as many, right? As, as, you know, add ten judges. So there are a number of factors that, that, that feed into this. I think the, so we can, we can run that scenario. Um, I guess the, the only thing I was trying to communicate is that, that based on all of the factors and based on the variables, they did in fact produce a range. And to allow us to step back and say, you know what, we think the optimal forecast for the average length of stay is really forty-three as opposed to fifty-one is the one we ought to be basing the size of the jail on. We had that ability to do that. And if we want to dial that back further and make some further assumptions, we can do that as well.
And could you also not, could you also think about a model assumption where you had continued access to, let's say, five hundred beds, a thousand beds elsewhere beyond this main facility? Could we build a scenario like that?
Yeah, we could. You mean where we, for example, had continued access to ACDC or something?
Whatever, right. I mean, I think it's important to look at something like that too.
Yeah.
You know, because we obviously have other existing facilities that we either have access to or that we own outside of Rice Street right now.
Yeah.
And, you know, if we had, you know, future capacity of, you know, whether it is five hundred, a thousand, what could that do to a potential scenario as well? I think that question may be even more important than the other stuff that, and I was just, sorry, unnecessarily going on with you about, so.
Well, the other thing too is to your point, you know, we know that a third of the individuals in our jail have some kind of mental health issue. And, and, and arguably, if you were to pull one lever to be able to say, can we find a place for those individuals to be dealt with, treated in a different way that solves the problem long-term because we know jail isn't the right place? That's also, you know, something that we would want to focus on. So, so you are correct. There are some levers that we could pull, but I think what you're, you're seeing here is a, are, are scenarios that are based on, 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 you know, what we consider to be kind of more, the most likely scenarios, but we can, we can build those, absolutely.
Commissioner Barrett?
Don't go too far, Mr. Adams. Um, I, I just want to say, uh, first of all, you, you, Mr. Adams, just basically answered or said a lot of what I would have said in response to Vice Chair Ellis. But I want to, it seems like the only way things ever get officially done or not done here is if a commissioner speaks up and says, do this or do not do that. So I just want to be clear, I don't agree with Vice Chair Ellis asking for additional, um, models to be run based on his intuition. I, I don't think it's fair to put up a comparable, a, a comparable report based on a number that he just made up of thirty-five days average length of stay, when the numbers we have come from a complex data model and experts who do this for a living and who have done this across, uh, other projects. And so I would like to be on the record suggesting that if we are going to run a, a model, as Vice Chair Ellis suggested, it be very clearly labeled, um, so that the public sees it, uh, we see it as, as, as based on a request of a, a commissioner, not on the data model. So unless we're going to totally change the data model or hire new experts, I just, I don't see why running scenarios that we just willy-nilly come up with helps us move this project forward. In fact, just the opposite is happening. We're slowing it down. And if the, sorry, I'm on a rant now, but if, if the, if the object here is to save taxpayers money, I'd like to also reiterate the point that I've made multiple times already, uh, not today, but in previous meetings, that every day that we push this further, we increase the cost.
So, I'm not sure, was there a question?
I mean, the question is, well, the request, I guess, and all I'm really asking for you to do is acknowledge this. I, I frankly think it's a waste of time and money to run additional scenarios based on intuition. So I, if you're going to do it because you're being respectful and honoring the vice chair, which I understand, I just, I'm requesting, and maybe I'm just asking for acknowledgement, that it be very clearly labeled what it is and why it does not compare to the expert opinions.
Yeah, and, and I guess that's an important point. We, we can run the scenarios and, and, and we will do it because we do have the model. It will not change the official on-record recommendations of this group or me, right? I happen to believe, I, I've been looking at a lot of numbers for a long time. I'm not an expert, right? They say an expert is ten thousand hours of something. These are the experts. I don't have ten thousand hours of looking at jail stuff, but I've spent a lot of time with them. And, and, and I do believe, yes, we can run scenarios and we can come up with that. And, but ultimately, it's the board of directors, board of commissioners, I apologize, that has to make a decision on the size of the jail or if we build a jail. We can, based on your recommendations, it doesn't have to be based on what this group recommends. You can very well say, you know what, we're going to build a jail with a thousand beds, right? Or we're going to build a jail with ten thousand beds. And, and quite frankly, that's, that's the decision of the board of commissioners. What this group was hired to do is make a recommendation based on their experience and their expertise. We can in fact develop scenarios around that, but it won't necessarily change the on-record recommendation of the, of this group.
Right. I mean, I would maybe ask that if, it might be helpful again for the public, and I know the actual study is quite lengthy and there are a lot of appendices and such, and maybe this one is already there, but perhaps it would be helpful to list all the factors that go into the data model, just kind of with a, a, a short phrase, so that it's clear that it shouldn't be a one-to-one, um, correlation between population increase, for example, and number of bookings, because that seems to be the, the numbers that are, um, at, at issue with Vice Chair Ellis. So maybe that would be helpful to say that it's, you know, it's these political situations, it's the, um, you know, these extenuating circumstances that the county can't control, for example, sentencing guidelines. So that it's the, the perceived future political, um, landscape, et cetera, et cetera, right? That is causing the model to come out the way it does.
And we can, we can do that, we can include that the report itself is being kind of finalized. The other thing too is here again, the, the reason that the recommendation is to build to a certain scale in twenty thirty-seven, take a pause and then figure out whether we build the additional, I don't know, fifteen, twenty percent was very much to allow for any uncertainty that might have been built into these models, given the forecast horizon.
Yeah, and I want to thank you for reminding me about that, Mr. Adams, and that is a very important point, and I think it needs to be made over and over and over again. This is meant to be a phased approach. Um, and as we move into, uh, design phases, we can certainly also talk to, um, the design team about making sure that, you know, the building can be repurposed if necessary. Um, and so I think the phased approach and the fact that this is not a design at this point, but rather a, a guideline for amount of space needed is, is really important. Um, and the only other thing I wanted to, um, mention is if we're going to take into consideration, and again, not sure that's what we should be doing right now from a timing perspective, but if we are going to take into consideration beds at another facility, that we also then, um, talk about the cost to operate two facilities versus one. I would have to make the assumption, and, and Mr. Adams, you can correct me here, that there would be repeated, um, processes, for example, of checking people in, sort of, I know it's not a hotel, so pardon me. But, you know, the process of bringing people in, you'd have to have staff that's duplicated in two locations in some scenarios. And I, I don't know how much more or less, you know, or how much you save, you know, and how those numbers play out, smaller facility that we're building new versus additional staff requirements. Uh, and just what other, um, management issues the, the sheriff's department may have with the two facilities.
Well, the other variables would be, uh, whether the mayor in those particular areas would be so inclined in fifteen years. And secondly, whether the sheriffs in those facilities would be so inclined. Because my guess is they're not prepared to sign a fifteen-year agreement with us. So, here again, you add another set of variables into the equation that are hard to predict. Not saying we shouldn't run the scenario, but it is, it is, those, those, those then become other things that here again potentially are beyond our control.
Yeah, thank you very much for that.
Commissioner Hall, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I really believe in my heart of hearts that there is no one that wants to see these, uh, numbers showing an increase in the number of people incarcerated. And I think what we're forgetting is, uh, the programs and services piece of this in addressing recidivism. And, and Alton, you are shaking your head really hard. And I want to say thank you to Alton because you've really been working hard on this and you've been doing a really outstanding job on this whole project. But you, you and I have had long conversations about this and, and what we're missing is, you know, addressing recidivism, pre-arrest diversion, partnerships that help us to decrease these numbers. And we have to remember that being mandated by the state to provide health and human services means that we look at all aspects of what we can provide to our constituents to address these issues. And, and we have to start with looking at the children. Because talking to many, many of the people in the school system, caseworkers, case managers and, and teachers and, and psychologists, um, they're saying that the children are predisposed for incarceration. That they're literally being prepared to go to jail when they start school. And Alton, you're shaking your head yes again. It, it is what it is and it, and that especially children living in poverty with poor school systems are just, we can literally count them and we know, we can, these numbers right here. We can know these numbers very easily. And, and it's unfortunate, but we can all do something about that in making sure that we have the programs and services that are needed to start addressing those issues early on. And I want to go back to your original presentation on page thirteen. The one, the page that says, "The new jail includes new services for detainees and staff." And you mentioned expanding wraparound programs and services. You mentioned state-of-the-art medical and mental health housing that supports treatment and recovery. You mentioned focusing on case management and re-entry services to achieve successful return to the community. But the thing that is a little bit questionable is on page fourteen. We look at the percentages, um, for the space allocation and we look at the existing jail, we look at the proposed programming. And there's really nothing breaking down, um, the programs and services across, actually, all the way to page fifteen that mentions programs and services. There's nothing that really kind of categorizes what we're going to try to actually address as it relates to that, is it recidivism? Is it the family? Is it e- even, um, halfway houses? I think we need a whole new model for halfway houses. People should not be released back into the same exact environment that's, that created their issue that sent them to jail in the first place. They should be sent to a, a much more productive environment, not a halfway house. So, uh, I think I've asked for this before, but I'm going to ask again if you could categorize this and kind of break it down and show us how this space will be used and what types of programs and services are we looking at? What types of partnerships, um, to address bringing the numbers down? And not just going with the so-called quote-unquote "status quo" forecast, which is high, and I agree, Commissioner Ellis, we, these numbers are really heartbreaking. But thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner, for your, your passion relative to that. I can tell you that the, the next phase of this assignment could and should include an analysis of these program spaces that you're mentioning right here. These are considered macro-level programming numbers, which means there's not a significant amount of definition given to those numbers as of late. Some of these are, uh, percentage and statistical analysis that we've used on other projects. So we know roughly how many square feet you would need to execute these programs properly. But the next phase of this assignment should include what we call the micro-level program, which looks specifically at each of these areas in great detail. It actually maps out exactly what those spaces look like in many ways. So I can assure you, that is the next phase of this. So for example, that a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred that you're referring to, I would give you a report that breaks down exactly what that is and what programs sit within that. And certainly solicits your input on that as well, and any other constituents you, you think should be involved in it. But this is really seen as sort of a high-level view to shape the building initially in a feasibility study. But you're referring to another level of detail, which I completely appreciate. But that takes, typically takes a couple of months to look through those programs and then define them with you and with your constituents. And we'll make some recommendations on what we've seen in other counties as well.
That would be great, and it shouldn't be that hard because that's what we are mandated to do and we have departments that focus on a lot of these areas. And we fund nonprofit organizations to help us serve our constituents. And so, um, that, there's plenty of assistance in that area.
We have some good examples of recent projects where we can show you how those programs have broken down for other counties as well, some that are active at this time. So I think that would be extremely helpful, but completely understand your point.
Thank you.
You're diving deeper into the details, which I appreciate.
Thank you.
But that, in many ways, you've pinpointed the square footage that can make the most impact in the project.
That's right.
I understand your messaging of this.
And, and I'm diving deep into it because, uh, there could be potential funding impact because your number doesn't include programs and services.
Well, and the other, excuse me, but the other way to look at this is I may not have enough program, which might be your ultimate point here. The hundred and twenty-five thousand and change that we've noted, that may actually not be sufficient for some of the programs that you're trying to achieve. That would occur in the next level of analysis.
That's right. Thank you.
We look forward to that, if you'd like to.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just want to clarify, um, you guys have built the simulation model in Arena. And to set a variable at a fixed, like Commissioner Ellis, it takes no time when she had the model built. Isn't that correct? It's not like we're looking at a huge cost to just run some numbers to make, see what that looks like.
Right. I won't speak on behalf of Patrick, but I imagine that he could, he could generate that model for us.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I know prehistoric simulation, I took simulation and I know like to do something like that is not like asking thousands of dollars of expense. It's just running the numbers, fixing that one variable and running it.
I, I can tell you that it's, it's music to our ears to drive down the size of the facility. We just have to be comfortable that the mathematics that we're using are achievable based on what we see and what we believe to be the truth. So, um, I see no reason why we wouldn't try to simulate that model.
Yeah, just to see because we want our courts to have a goal of not keeping people, keeping them there at the minimum amount that they need to be there. So it'd be good just to, just to have the numbers, just to look at it so we can compare.
We'd be happy to run another model.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Bruce to Barrett?
Um, again, just want to point out, if the models are not based on the full data model, then it doesn't hold up compared to what numbers have already been presented. I'm not worried about the cost to actually change a couple of numbers and press go. What I'm concerned about is that we continue to push this process down the road. We're already behind schedule based on the recommended next steps, which should have started at the beginning of February. We're now at the beginning of March. If we take two, three, four, five, six more months running models based on intuition, we will not get to fruition on this project and we need to start moving. we will not get to fruition on this project, and we need to start moving. So that's all I'm suggesting, and again, want to make it clear that if we run any additional models and they don't have the full backing of the, of all of the data points, then we need to make that clear on anything that's presented. I know you guys will do that, because you're professionals, but I just want to make that clear.
We will do that, and it'll be the fourth model, that'll be more aggressive than the, than the optimum.
Commissioner Thorne.
I was just saying, it'd be great information to have. I think we need to give our court system, they, obviously, we're working with the courts, trying to make it more efficient, and if we do that, then we probably can shorten this length of stay. That's all, I'm just saying we should have that goal, that should be all looked at together, not just the predicament that we are just going to increase our length of stays through the years, so.
Understood.
Continue.
Thank you, Chairman. Next slide, please. We were asked last time we were here to, to, to kind of break down the macro program slightly, to give more definition to the 109, excuse me, 1,984 medical and mental health beds, and if we just for a moment talk about those. There's 392 medical beds, I think Commissioner Ellis, you had raised this topic, wanted some more detail about it, and there are 1,592 mental health beds. And if you would just advance the slide, please, for me for a second. This is a breakdown, again, this is a macro-level summary of all the housing in the entire facility. There's the, the men are noted, noted in the left column and the women in the right, but if you come down and you start after the, the word youth there, and include mental health acute and all of the housing below that, that is the summary of 1,984 beds, and how these break down. Now, I will tell you that typically a macro-level program like this, again, will get more definition through the next phase of the programming process. It's quite possible that some of those beds kind of slide one way or the other after deeper discussions with the sheriff and the staff, but we're comfortable at this level with these numbers based on the conversations with, that we've had with the sheriff and their staff to date. But it gives you kind of a snapshot of where these are.
All right, Vice Chair Ellis.
Yeah, a couple of things.
Yes, Commissioner.
Not willy-nilly questions, but questions I've got based upon things I've observed and seen. The 1,592 mental health beds and 392, I guess, how did you, what are you considering a mental health bed? I mean, it's that, while our inmate population has, many of them may have mental health needs, I think having a mental health need and being in a mental health bed are not necessarily going to be always mutually exclusive, i.e., a person needing an antidepressant may not need a mental health acute or subacute bed. That's a very large number, even of 1,592. I mean, it's my understanding right now that our total beds in use for medical and mental health is probably more in the neighborhood of like 250 to 300, maybe? What you would classify as a mental health or medical bed right now?
Well, I can tell you that this information has come from the sheriff's department.
Well, I, come from the sheriff's department and how, I mean, it's, in other words, did you derive the mental health bed number by the, did somebody say, okay, we have 1,500 inmates on some form of mental health medication? Is that how it's derived?
Some of it.
What's the data that, I mean, if that's the basis for it, I mean, I'm just, how'd you arrive at that figure? If it came from the sheriff's data, or the sheriff gave you information and that's how you came up with it?
We, the sheriff gave us information, and then we balanced that against the normal percentages of mental health beds that we find in detention centers, yes. This population is a growing population, it's a very significant population, it's a growing population, and there is obviously room built into this program for 2047.
Yeah, I understand that. Maybe, let me ask my question then directly, what is a mental health bed? Who goes into a mental health bed? What is the description of a person going into a mental health bed?
Well, that's determined by the sheriff's department through their classification process, but.
Okay. The other source of this, Commissioner Ellis, Vice Chair Ellis, was, was Navcare.
Right.
Because they're the ones that are treating the, the individuals. Today, we have about 30 to 35% of our population are under some, have some type, taken some type of psychotropic medication. That's about average when you look at the prison or jail population across the country. To your, to your question about what a, 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 a mental health bed may mean, it, what it, what it means is we basically are separating those individuals from general population. So it might be a separate pod that basically houses individuals in individual cell who have those issues, but it doesn't, so that's, that's how it'd be classified. It doesn't necessarily mean that that particular cell is different or whatever, it just means that we'd have some way of classifying them or separating them from general population. That's my understanding anyway of what that bed, of what that quote-unquote "bed" means.
Well, it sounds like, I mean, look, I understand the issues related to mental health in our, and, you know, in our, in our jails and prisons, and we definitely need segmentation, whatever. This, this number is just, seems to be disproportionately high, and maybe it's just why I asked to try to understand what you are meaning by it, and how fungible are these beds to be able to flow from medical to mental health? And I mean, medical, you know, I sort of get, means sort of something that's very clearly generally defined, and people may float in and out of that. Mental health, just because I'm on, you know, some form of medication, doesn't necessarily, you know, imply that I'd need to be in a acute or subacute bed, I, I, so.
That, that, that's correct, and that's why the, 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 the subacute and the acute are, I don't know, 700 or whatever, 600 and something, but we're talking about, I think that, that the sense is that there would be some, to your point, using the word fungible, between general population and, and the, and the non-acute type of bed.
So is that more, I guess, or maybe that's another question to you, would these be more fungible between a medical bed or more of a general population bed?
Be more fungible between a GP bed, general population bed, and individuals who may not be acute or subacute.
Okay.
Is that correct? Yeah, that, that, that is correct.
Is that correct?
One, one other point there, Commissioner, is that these beds typically need full observation, these beds typically are on one level, these beds need more access around the actual bed itself, so the configuration of these types of patient rooms, if you will, are slightly different than the other configurations in the facility.
But wouldn't necessarily prohibit it being used for general population?
That's exactly, that is, that is a correct statement, and these are typically smaller housing units, if you will.
Okay. And special needs is more special housing, is that a?
Yes, special needs is really more of your geriatric population, pregnant women, mothers, ambulatory issues, these are people that fall into that category of special needs. These are also very flexible beds as well, for the most part, but these are people that need, have special needs and have special access to programs.
So would those be more fungible with medical beds?
I think they could be.
Or either?
They could probably be either, frankly.
Okay, all right.
And then they, go right ahead.
No, go ahead.
Then they just need to be located in a way that they're accessible easily in the facility, once we begin to really understand how the building stacks, if you will.
In terms of the model of supervision for the inmates, in terms of the structure, is this generally meant to be a direct supervision facility?
This is, this is, in our view, a direct.
Or a hybrid.
This is a direct supervision facility for the most part at this point in time, yes.
So in, in the, with that, you know, one of the things that, you know, that we've heard is that our inmate population has become increasingly a more, on a percentage basis, housing more violent criminals, or alleged criminals, but, but looking at this, our high maximum number that we've configured this with is 288, and medium 2176, and GP of 360. Is that realistic in terms of the makeup of our inmate population right now, that we would only have, you know, sort of a structure that was built for, you know, and, and I, I don't know, that's a classification issue, I guess, would range, like, what does, what does medium mean? And, you know, does a full direct supervision model really work for the type of inmate population that we're housing right now?
I think you make an interesting point. It's quite possible that when we begin to program this building in more detail, Commissioner, with the sheriff and his staff, that there are specific housing units that they feel need a higher level of security, and those could actually become indirect supervised facilities, if it, if it actually gets to that point. Our starting point was to try to have the facility as directly supervised as possible.
Okay. So what would indirect, and would indirect more imply that you've got a broader number of people in there, in that pod with them, or that there's a?
The officer has no engagement with the actual population.
No engagement, okay.
Right. The officer would be behind glass, if you will, Commissioner.
Is that the way generally that, the, the high maximum, that's what that implies?
Okay, from time to time, that is the case, depending on the severity of those individuals, yes.
Okay, all right, thanks.
So that, there's some nuancing in there, in how these housing units will be laid out, which becomes another level of kind of programmatic definition, if you will.
Okay.
Good, good, great questions.
Continue.
No further questions on that particular?
No, sir, continue.
Next slide, please. This, this is slide 16, we simplified this slide, I believe it was Commissioner Arrington that reminded us that we were sort of mixing apples and oranges here, so we've, we've simplified this slide. Next slide, please, to talk about it slightly. Next slide, please. So on the left-hand side, we've modified that 250, excuse me, 2510 number to reflect beds, which is consistent with the beds on the green side of the slide. How we derive the 2510 is essentially the available beds in Rice Street, that's the 1125 times 2, plus Union City beds, which is 260. So if we're comparing apples to apples here, there are 2510 beds available, technically speaking, inside the Rice Street facility in Union City, and the new facility, as we are suggesting, would have a total capacity of 5,480. So now we're beds to beds. Commissioner Arrington, this is the slide you had some concerns with, so we tried to simplify this and make it a little more logical. Of course, the gross square feet per bed number has gone up slightly, the gross square feet is unchanged, but those are the actual bed numbers. And then we've, we've included the people as well, Commissioner Arrington. You'll see the 2022 actual ADP at 3,300, again, roughly, the ADP compares to that 2510, which clearly tells you there isn't enough room. And then to the right is the new facility recommendations with our ADP at 4,455. Remember, the difference between average daily population and the actual capacity of the facility is that 20% that you set aside for classification, repairs to the facility, things of that nature. So hopefully, that's a little more appropriate, Commissioner Arrington, on the side-by-side comparison of the beds. We, we feel pretty comfortable about that, and think it's a, certainly an improvement. Thank you. Next slide, please. Okay, question six, which is slide A6, and if you just kind of bear with me a little bit, this was the slide that we developed that had the comparable counties, we call them comparable counties, and let me start there. Comparable in our mind was defined as counties that were urban with active or recent jail expansion projects, and counties for which the feasibility study team had some data. We basically talked ourselves into this slide because we thought it was an interesting comparison across projects that we knew were under construction. It, it was noted that these counties are not located in the southeast, and thus geographically not comparable with regional differences and other variables that would prove significant. So there was some weakness to that slide, and we moved it to the, to the appendix. What we have done is we've revised that, that slide to compare now incarceration rates across counties in 2021. So if we could just take a look at that slide, please, for a moment. Next slide. So we've basically repackaged this slide, I think Commissioner Arrington, you, you raised very good points about this. So what we did is we came back, and for example, we took Wayne County's population and their jail ADP, and that develops an incarceration rate. Incarceration rates are noted in, per, population per 100,000, okay? So there's Wayne County, there's Franklin County, there's Cuyahoga, and Baltimore, and there is Fulton County. So we think this simplified things, Commissioner Arrington, hopefully.
Yes.
It's, it's, it's fairly clean in our minds. The one thing that we did do here, and I will bring it to your attention, you're probably wondering why we didn't use 2021 for Fulton County, and we could have done that, and that incarceration rate would have been lower. However, we wanted to use the same 2022 Fulton County number on the next slide, which I'll show you shortly, so to, to not confuse matters, that's exactly what we did. Next slide, please. Next slide.
Go stand off here.
Oh, there it is. Go back one, please, I'm sorry. So I believe Chairman Pitts, you asked us to take a look at the neighboring counties, which we attempted to do with this slide. These, this data, or these data points are, are actually from the governor's office of planning and budget, and the Department of Community Affairs tabulates the, the inmate jail population, and they do that periodically during the course of the year. So what we've done here for you is, you'll see Gwinnett County, Cobb, DeKalb, Fulton, and Clayton with their ADPs in 2022, and those, by the way, are tabulated in December of 2022. They have a unique way of doing this, but you'll see how Fulton County carries over 3,426, and it puts the county in perspective of the, the neighboring counties. Clayton being significantly higher in this, in this matrix. Any questions on that? It's really just a, a data assembly of, and you can see where the points of reference are here. We wanted to take it one step further for you. Next slide, please, was to actually look at the highest incarceration rates by state in the United States, and these are the five, Arkansas, Georgia, Oklahoma, Mississippi, and Louisiana. Now, I will tell you that this incarceration rate is jails and prisons, that's why these numbers are higher. This also includes juveniles, and this also includes anyone in federal custody. Again, this data source is the Prison Policy Initiative, which can be easily accessed as well, but these are the five highest incarceration rates in the United States, Georgia being one of the top five. And again, these are 2021 numbers that were available off these web links. Any comments there?
Commissioner Vice Chair Ellis?
On, going back to slide 202, the neighboring county stuff, do we have any way to obtain average length of stay or daily booking data from those, from those entities?
We could try.
Yeah, we could. Be worth it, to see if, you know, kind of what are the, are the drivers, you know, kind of behind some of these numbers.
Any particular in mind, Commissioner, that you're focused on there, that you'd be interested in?
Say that again?
Any particular counties that I, that you're focused on, just out of curiosity?
I, I think Gwinnett, Cobb, and DeKalb would be good comparables to have.
We can certainly look into that.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Next slide, please. There was also a question about P3 and where that delivery method has been utilized on municipal projects. We had Jay do a little bit of research for us on this, and this is actually interesting in our minds. There are roughly 185 municipal social infrastructure projects in the U.S. Of that, 10 are criminal justice-related. A few of these I am familiar with and can comment on them, but what I do find interesting, I'll elaborate on the Alabama prison facilities, those were considering a fairly aggressive P3 strategy. I am not certain that that is the actual delivery method at this point in time. I know they are under design and underway, and the Kansas prison, if that is, in fact, one of the ones that we've been involved in, that was a a true P3 design-build-operate type of facility. But what I find kind of interesting about this list is it's more courts-related than it probably is corrections or detention, and that might be the takeaway from this list as a whole. I I will remind us that the next phase of this project does look at the delivery methods and the financing options in more detail, and it could be at that point in time that that the P3 approach is simply not the right approach in one way or another, but that remains to be seen. But this will give give you a gentle snapshot of where some projects are in the United States that fit into the criminal justice category of P3 projects. Any questions or thoughts there? Next slide, please. This is a duplicate of the slide that I talked about last time on the on the recommended next steps. I will tell you that we have been chatting with Alton about the next steps. We have developed some preliminary strategies and fees related to these with with Alton, and and those are under conversation with him right now. But I will tell you that the only one that we are not considering at this point in time that's on this list is to update the population forecast. That's been removed. We don't really see that necessary at this point. If you talk to Patrick, he thinks that until early 2024, when some of the programs and initiatives that are underway in Fulton County right now really take additional flight, that the reduction in the bed needs may surface, as predicted in our in our model. So that is really not a necessary objective at this point in time. But to create the jail operating cost model, the detailed space program, to Commissioner Hall's comment earlier, the jail phasing options on the site, Commissioner Barrett that you mentioned as well, there are different ways of doing that. I'm sure Chris has many thoughts in his mind. Of course, that involves developing some site concepts. These are somewhat rudimentary, but they'll give you an idea of what the building stacks and looks like, and the shape of the building, and then update the cost estimate that Chris would do as well, to see if the markets change in any way, shape, or form, and then determine the project financing and construction delivery strategy. We do have that in our fee at this point in time. That would be where Jay would come in, Jay Brown, that is, and really look at this aggressively with us on what is the proper way to finance and deliver deliver the project. This would give you, in my mind, the right tools and documents that you could attach to your solicitation to design-build teams, the next architectural team that's assigned to this project, and that would give you your launching point for the project in 2024. Any questions there?
Commissioner Barrett?
Yeah, I can save this for the end if you had more, because I know we're close to the end here.
I have just the closing slide, Commissioner.
Okay, which is the question-and-answer slide, so perfect timing. I just want to, I think I may have asked this, this might be a county manager or a Mr. Adams' question last time, but do, and maybe you guys just hang nearby, just in case, but do we have, is the idea to do some of these next steps with you all, and do we have a price for that?
Yeah, we have worked with with procurement, and we believe that we can use our existing firm as part of an extension, because we envisioned some of this when we did the initial RFP. We do have a price, we're working through some details, I've worked with our CFO, we think we have the funding, some of the funding identified. So if it is your your request, we can come back to you with a specific agenda item that would lay out what that cost would be broken down by these areas, as well as the potential funding lines.
Yeah, I mean, I think that may be the next step, but I, before we get to that, I want to just direct a question to the county manager. We had spoken a little bit beforehand, and I just want to ask sort of how we go from this phase of of accepting the base assumptions and the base requirements, if we, you know, take these recommendations or throw them out, as has been offered, and how do we sort of move forward to the next step? I mean, obviously, I think it's pretty clear that, from my perspective, we would like to, I would like us to use the experts that we've hired and use this data to move forward. So how do we, what is the next step to move forward and say this is data we're all comfortable with and continue forward?
All right, before you begin, Mr. Manager, I don't want to make the mistake we made at the last time we were talking about TADS, and y'all interpreted, because only one commissioner made a statement that that was the will of the board, so let's be real clear about this. No decision has been made yet, and if there are some next steps in your mind, that's one thing, but we've not signed off on this by any means.
Of course, I think that's sort of what I am asking, is about the sign-off. I have the floor.
No, you don't. Manager's getting ready to answer the question. You let him talk.
Mr. Chairman, would you like for me to answer this in the context of what's being discussed in terms of strategic retreat for the board? So Commissioner, and as we discussed prior to the meeting, and has been discussed with several of you, the thought process is we've concluded the jail feasibility study and delivered recommendations on next steps. There's still, obviously, some fleshing out of that to do, and perhaps an alternative scenario. As you know, or many of you know, we've been working with Grady, with Morehouse, and also with ENY in a data analytics effort, looking at the healthcare gaps that exist in Fulton County, and the ones that were made worse by the Wellstar closures. Of course, social determinants of health plays into that as well, and it's becoming very compelling as a piece of work, requiring, I think, a county-level response. As you know, we have financially modeled both of these primary areas before public safety and public health, and they represent very significant financial commitments. We discussed both of these as the primary use of loss funds during our negotiations with the cities. We did make some nominal progress, but not nearly enough to adequately address these issues that are emerging. As I mentioned, we've discussed with the chair and the vice chair, kind of an alternative way of putting a retreat on the schedule that would be perhaps easier to accomplish, and that would be ending the next two meetings slightly early, and then adjourning from here into a retreat format, using the Public Affairs Room on the third floor, which could be legally advertised and accomplished, based on what the county attorney has advised. The thought, the structure of those would be in two meetings, with one of being a simple update on what is our strategic plan, even though these non-sequiturs are going to inform it very significantly, but giving you an update again on what that plan was, how we manage to that plan on an annual basis, so you'll get a good view of what 2023 deliverables are. But in that first meeting, really addressing the legal requirements of what you should be thinking about in terms of how you respond to what's being presented today, but also what will be presented as we get closer with the public health work. The second meeting, then, would be the two more perspectives, the operational perspective, much of which you're hearing, of course, today, but you'll also begin to hear that from public health, and we would plan to deliver a perspective on this public health work. And then, finally, the financial perspective. So if you thought about it in simple terms, it's kind of what are you required to address? What should you address, and perhaps what can you afford to address? As I said, we'll finish these next meetings early, adjourn and do so, and the objective would be to come out of those with a clear path forward relative to the jail, healthcare, and and also financial strategy. I'm sure there will be some dangling participles, like on financial, are there ways to accomplish this, other than just a military rate increase? Are there sales tax mechanisms? Are there things that could be done through a hospital authority approach? But nonetheless, the the goal would be to have the board coalesce around, this sounds like something we've got to legally respond to. Operationally, we can, we have all the data that is needed, and financially, we understand the implications. So that's over the next now, what would be approximately a month since that first meeting in April is delayed, we would like to come to a conclusion, if you will, on a direction.
So just to follow up on that, if if that all goes according to plan, and we're able to come to some conclusions after two sort of retreat-style meetings, the next steps that are proposed here would be starting April 1st? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, I think that would be an expectation.
So we'd be pushing this whole schedule back three months, basically?
Oh, May, I'm sorry.
It'd be May.
It'd be May 1st, or the end of May.
No, May, May 1st.
Right, so I was saying April 30th, same div. But yeah, so essentially, three months later than what this current schedule is, which would push everything out three months at least, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just to be clear. Thank you for that.
Anything else, gentlemen? All right, Commissioner Ellis, Vice Chair Ellis?
On slide 201, or whatever it was, page 201, the the one about the other urban counties, which of the facilities that have recently been done, would you say close, most most closely approximate what you all recommended in terms of a design for our structure?
It'd probably be Franklin County, Commissioner Ellis.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, that is a constructed facility. It's it has, it's held in high regard right now nationally, so I think it's probably a good example, and probably best answers your question.
All right.
All right, anything else? Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a great afternoon.
Commissioners, presentation and discussion item 23.
What page?
On page 11.
All right.
230097, discussion of ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Article 3, Division 2 of the Fulton County Code of Ordinances to modify the code to require the county manager to present the budget request for the next fiscal year to the Board of Commissioners no later than 60 days before the military rate is set and for other purposes, sponsored by Commissioner Arrington.
Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, I'd love to get your input. Again, this is just a discussion item, but I'm going to bring it back for action item at the next meeting, but I would love, it's been held twice already, would love to get your input and consideration on this. I believe that it's necessary, particularly given budget that we adopted this year, the jail, and all the other expenses that we have coming up. I think it's going to be important for us to know what our budget is before we vote on the military rate, or what, you know, our proposed budget, it may not be the final budget, but I think it'll be important for us to know, how much money do we need to run this county? Or how much money will we need to run this county as we continue to move forward? So I'd love to get comments, suggestions, criticisms, whatever you have, you know, I'd love to get it on the front end so we can get it right.
Commissioner Barrett?
Commissioner Arrington, thank you for being concerned about the budget process and trying to move the ball forward on getting it fixed. I I support the spirit of this 100%. That said, I think this is, I would, I think my take is I would rather not piecemeal a solution, and I think there's a lot of things that need to probably be looked at to fix it. So my thought would be, let's sort of make this part of something bigger, and maybe rather than push this forward in the next meeting for a vote, I mean, you're certainly welcome to do that, obviously, but I would rather sort of have it be a part of a of a bigger discussion. Vice Chair Ellis and I have had some conversations about things we both see as possibly changeable that might help the whole process, and be happy to include you in some of those conversations, if you like, but that's sort of where my head is at the moment.
All right, Vice Chair Ellis?
Some similar things, Commissioner Arrington. I mean, I think, I think it's sort of a practical way, what you've got styles, probably not feasible, but I think there are other ways to get at the intent of what you're, you know, seeking to do. So I, so I think it's just, it's definitely a conversation we all need to collectively have, whether it's, you know, kind of in this forum, or, you know, it's part of the retreat and all that sort of stuff, but I definitely think it needs to be addressed before we get into the next budget cycle, for sure.
All right, other comments? Would this be appropriate at the retreat, Mr. Manager?
I'd like to share an answer.
Yes, sir, I think we could discuss it at the retreat without any issue.
And I would love to get Madam CFO, your thoughts and analysis on this, and yours as well, Mr. Manager.
Okay, anything else? All right, any other matters to come before us today, Madam Clerk?
No further items.
All right, no further items before us today. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Yes, period. Thank you.
For a written transcript of this meeting, or if you need reasonable accommodations, including this communication in an alternative format due to disability, please contact the clerk to the commission's office at 404-612-8232.